I'd like to thank everybody for coming and joining us on the November Board of Commissioners meeting. With that being said, I'd like for Commissioner Langley to say the prayer and Commissioner Booth to do the pledge.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we are grateful and thankful for this very moment in time, and we invite your peace here in this meeting, God, that we will be about your business. Allow us to agree, to disagree, but to do so in love, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have any add to's or deletions from the agenda tonight? If not, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
A motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed. Six zero, seven zero, excuse me. Okay, public comments. Stephen Rigazzi, honor. Step up to the podium, please. Sorry, you have three minutes.
Okay. My complaint is about the way that your county attorney that you guys have appointed is going about on his collecting the taxes. He's excessive with his charges. He's charging $675 plus the $195 court cost. If you're two years late, you're getting charged $675 on the parcel twice, so you end up paying triple the amount of the taxes. When he's asked to be contacted, he refuses to return phone calls, does not contact. I've had Mr. Booth, I called, went down on my behalf. Now, I've got a county official that will go down and do it, but you've got a man that doesn't live in this county that refuses to talk to the public who he's supposed to be representing this county. I'm an investor with multiple properties. I had surgery, I tried to explain that to him. I even went through the appeals process. When I went to court that day, the bailiff or whoever it was sent me to the wrong courtroom. So he ends up getting a judgment. I paid all the taxes. I appealed his charges. Excessive for a man to go in at $675 and one day of filing and make $2,500 in his pocket in a single day for coming down and filing a piece of paper. Then on top of that, I went down to take care of his judgment the other day because he was unwilling to discuss anything with anybody, and now he pulls up the new thing that not only did I have to pay the late charges, his excessive attorney's fees, but had to pay the 2015 taxes as well in order to get the judgment off of me. So by the time it gets said and done, I paid $9,000 in taxes this year. And I would pose to every one of you, if it was your parent and they were too proud to tell you, would you like to know that you lost your farmhouse that you grew up in over $3,000 in taxes? The man was unwilling to speak. I went to Win Kenyon, he had multiple arguments with him, and it just seems like the attorney's got the rules, but he's not even in this county. The money that this man's getting paid is going to a completely different county. The money, when I buy parcels here, it produces income for this county and the residents of this county and housing for this county. And I just feel that the whole thing has just been completely unfair, the whole process is completely unfair. He should get one fee, one time for his filing, not multiples in a day. That's basically what I have to say about it.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Mo.
I'm going to take a second, a couple of seconds of your time tonight. I just wanted to thank you for, I was here a few weeks, I don't know if it was last month or the month before, my memory's kind of slack, talking to you about Ruth House. Well, tonight I'm here just to remind you or suggest that you, and I'm not asking you for any money, but I'm asking you to help participate in our fundraiser this year, which is going to be December the 5th. It's going to be the Tar River Swing Band's going to be playing at the Turnage, and for the audience, it's $25 a ticket. It starts at 7:30, and I'd like to leave these with the commissioners and invite everybody to participate. Know that your money's going to a good cause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got a couple of things. I was talking to quite a few people here in Beaufort County in the last month or so, and just all the school shootings and things of that nature that we've had, not here in Beaufort County, but throughout the nation. I started asking a few questions, and a lot of the parents that send their children off to school in the mornings don't really know how well they're protected. Same thing with the community college. After talking with these people, I went to Beaufort County Schools and talked to them about their school security, and then I went to Beaufort Community College and talked with their security people and asked them what their security process was. So instead of me trying to explain it, what I asked both of those entities to do is come and give us a short presentation and let us know how well secure our children are when we send them to school. And I'd like to ask Rusker Ganis to come first.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, and other county commissioners, thank you for having me here today to discuss this matter. You have me on the schedule for 10 minutes, but don't worry, it's not going to take that long.
We use 10 minutes.
I have a tendency to talk fast, as my other Board of Education likes to say. I'm going to introduce myself. My name's Rusker Ganis. I'm the Director of Maintenance, Safety, and Security for the school system. I've had this position now for approximately one year. Like I said, I'm here just to give you a very brief update, just an update, on what the school system is doing for the safety of all of our students and staff. It's a very touchy subject with all the news that's coming up of school shootings, and I think it's a very important matter. We have 15 locations in the school system, 13 of them being schools, the other two are central service personnel, plant operations, and our central office, transportation. That can be a big challenge, is there's not a one-size-fits-all solution for campus security. Each school is designed structurally different. Each school has its own culture and atmosphere because of grade levels. You have kindergarten and pre-k up the high school. Each school needs different attention when it comes to security and so forth. They also are in different locations over our county. You have Aurora, Bellhaven area, Northeast, the Northside High School, and then you have schools right here in the heart of the city that are opposed to much more foot traffic. So where do we start and what are we doing as a school system? We learn from information available. FBI did a study from 2000 to 2013 of 160 shootings. We learned that education and businesses open to pedestrian traffic were subject and accounted for 70% of school shootings. As a school system, we are education and we're open for business. We are a very large employer, and these two categories make us up, and that's 70%. In 2008, the Department of Homeland Security supported proactive response options known as the three outs, get out, hide out, take out. The International Association of Chief Police in 2009 recommended change, wanted teachers to have options, not just a lockdown strategy. U.S. Department of Education in 2013 made it mandatory we end all lockdown protocols, give these teachers options. When I came here, we were just a lockdown-only system. If you want to look at lockdown and how you view it, lockdown bases survival on the inability of the bad guy to reach the innocent in hope of police or civilian intervention or suicide. The question comes from that, what happens if police intervention does not happen? And that's how the new policy came into effect. The state goes by run, hide, fight, and that's what we have adopted. It is an option-based strategy that gives faculty and staff choices other than lockdown during a critical incident. Each option may be different for each person, student or staff on campus, given the situation they are faced with. If you're not faced with a threat when the situation occurs, you might want to hide, vice versa if the threat is opposed in the room as we sit here. Some training that goes along with it, the state provides tons of information that's beneficial to us as a school system, along with a mandatory critical incident video we watch every year. We also conduct annual active shooter tabletop exercises at each school. We are able to achieve these drills slash exercises with the help of Beaufort County Sheriff's Office, the North Carolina State Highway Patrol, local PD, wildlife officers, and marine fisheries. All those guys are willing to get out there and help and be involved in the school system. It amazes me, they show up and they practice like it's the real thing. It's just a drill, but you never know if it's the real thing or not. And it's also great to see how much the safety of our students means to each and every one of them. Speaking of our Sheriff's Office, Chief Deputy Rose is here, and I want to thank our school resource officers because they do a wonderful job each and every day working with our kids. They serve our high schools and our middle schools and they help out with our elementary as needed. We have some security features in place at our schools already, but we are always in the search of ways to make those features better. We're always itching at the next step of how we can be better, and we learn from our mistakes. Audible notification systems, video surveillance, campus and other access control, knockbox entry systems for fire and police are great ways to improve our schools. We try to accomplish these ways in a way not to affect our students' learning environment. Anytime you add security features to a school, it can give the feeling of a prison. We're not going to put jail bars on a window or any colored gray cell doors that slide back and forth. We got to do it in a way that it does not affect the learning environment of the kids. We want it to be bright, beautiful colors. We're going to continue making our schools safer by adding more and more of these security features and more training for our students and staff. We have many projects that I'm not going to discuss right now in open session, but they are very, very close to being fully designed and implemented. We also hope to implement a school safety committee that is made up of law enforcement officers, school administrators, and teachers. True, why not add students? Each person would bring some different idea to the table, maybe something I didn't think about, maybe something a law enforcement officer didn't think about. And as I told you at the beginning, my brief isn't going to last very long, so coming to a close, Beaufort County Schools has a motto, "Providing safe harbor where all children are successful." And as I want to applaud our teachers, every day, they live up to that part of the motto in helping our children become successful. And I believe that all of us want to make sure that we are able to provide and keep maintaining that safe harbor for them. I greatly appreciate your time inviting me here today to talk about this touchy subject, but it's an important subject, and I also appreciate every one of your support, not only what you do for the county, but the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. I'd like to have Mark Nelson from Beaufort Community College.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mark Nelson, Vice President for Administrative Services. And Russ, thank you for giving my brief. Don't have much more to add to that. Katie, do we have the slides for that?
Um...
I know it's in their book. They have the slides in their book.
I didn't know. Were you bringing, do you have the?
I have it, but we don't necessarily have to go through it. It's not going to be less different than what Russ put forward. I'll tell you what, I think I do want to do that.
Do you?
Okay.
Do you?
Okay.
Do you know what tone it is? You're doing that.
We're not going to do it.
You should find it.
Sorry about that. I thought we were going to have that loaded and ready to go. Okay. And as I said, Russ, we pretty much follow the same format, pretty much. I won't go into as much detail on some of the slides that I do have. And I do have here with me tonight our Chief of Police, Chris Harrison, and of course, Dr. Dandy, our president as well. Okay, this is the agenda that we'll follow, and that looks like a lot, but since Russ has done half of it, we'll skip a couple of those slides. Okay, our mission for the police department, and that's mainly what I'm going to talk about tonight, is to assist faculty and students and staff in maintaining a safe environment. This is our police department organizational chart. They do answer to me, and even though I'm not a sworn officer, I am a retired military police officer, so I know a few things about security. We do have two full-time officers, one part-time officer and two reserve officers to help us when we have big events like graduations. And some people may not know that our police department is certified by Training and Standards for North Carolina, and they do have full arrest powers on our campus or at college events that we have off-campus. We use the community policing model, and three major components are community partnerships, organizational transformation, and problem solving. On the community partnerships, we work with outside agencies and also internal divisions to make sure that when we're doing planning, that we include safety and security in that. All right, organizational transformation. Basically, we try not to be a run-of-the-mill police department. Try to make a few changes, making sure that we are a friendly organization so that the students approach the officers and don't mind doing that. We changed from a standard police uniform to what we call a soft uniform, so we are not as intimidating to the students. And we also try to make the officers visible and in positive manner, and not always just right in the ticket or something like that, but out there helping the students in other situations. Far as the problem solving, one of the things that we do is Chief Harrison has assigned his officers sectors of the campus to take a look under the SERA model for scanning, analysis, and response assessment, talk to the students and try to find out what they're thinking, go into areas that they may think need concern as they do their routine patrols. Chief Harrison also sponsors coffee with a cop on occasion to try to get folks to come into his office and just sit down and talk to them, so that it's in a non-threatening situation, and hopefully they will share information with him on areas that we need to improve on. And I think Chief Harrison will tell you, they don't mind telling us where we need to improve. This is the security coverage that we do have, since we're a small department, pretty much 7:30 to 11:00 during the week and 7:30 to 5:30 in the afternoon. And then if we have after our events, we bring those guys in afterwards. Okay, active shooter training, and Russ talked a lot about this, so I won't get into details on that. We do also use the run, hide, fight that's recommended by the state, use the same training videos that the county schools use, and we also do tabletop exercises and drills as Active shooter mitigation measures. Of course, the training for staff and faculty is mandated every year, and we make sure that they sign the certificate indicating that they have in fact completed the training. We also conduct student training and student orientations and other classes that we may have. Having the police department on campus as a first responder is great, because if we had to wait for outside help to come in, we've already got officers on campus. And the other good thing, a lot of times we're doing law enforcement training, so depending on what class is going on that day, we may have a bunch of officers on campus. Panic buttons, we have panic buttons located in different key areas around the campus that calls into our security system, so if someone sees something, they can just push the button, they don't have to pick up the phone and dial 911. We also have door locks on our classrooms, and we encourage the instructors to have those doors remain locked during classes, and they also have security bars that they can lock the door from the inside as well. Warning and mitigations, warning and notifications. We have an on-campus system called Alertus, that basically we can send alert messages to any computer on campus that is on, and it will interrupt what that person's doing and put the message up there. Nexo Cellular Emergency Text and Email Notification System, internal public address system, of course, email to all staff, faculty, and students. We keep a three-deep roster for each one of these systems, so if somebody is out, there'll be a second or third person that can activate the notification system. We're also subject, as a higher education facility, to the Gene Cleary Act, which we have to provide information to the U.S. Department of Government or Education every year. Requires us to provide our crime statistics and also our policy statements to them. There's also an annual training requirement that goes along with this for select staff that are designated as campus security authorities. And if we fail to meet that deadline for the training, there's a $35,000 penalty per person that does not meet that training deadline. So we are on those folks every year before October 1st hits, making sure that they have got that training completed. A couple of things that we could use to enhance our security posture, of course, is an outdoor notification system. Right now, if something happens, folks that are walking between classes may or may not hear the announcements that we do or get the text. External electronic door locks, but also assist with law enforcement coming in. We do have the knock boxes, but it takes time to open those key boxes and keys out to the doors. We have a security camera system, but the thing is well beyond its life cycle, so we could use an update on that. We can't add any more cameras to that. Also, our police patrol cars do not have the wireless data systems, and we have to call to the county to get information. Also, police call box stations around campus would help on the outside if someone's called outside. That's pretty much my briefing. Those are the items that we covered. Have any questions?
Does Ward have any questions for Russ or Mark on this issue? Okay, thank you very much.
I've also included some websites there on our page that we're required to keep for the federal government, and you're very welcome to take a look at them. And I also included in your packet the annual security report that we sent to the U.S. Department of Education with our crime statistics.
Thank you both so very much for coming and spending time with us. I need to go back to public comments. Mr. Earl Carney called in, said he was supposed to be speaking tonight. He said he called in, so I'm allowed for him to come and speak for three minutes. Mr. Carney?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Earl Carney. I appeared before you folks in September and requested that you take a look at formulating and ordinance that would require the purveyors of propane post prices. I sent an email to each of the members of the commissioners here that have an email account. I got one response back, and that was from Mr. Brennan. He had the courtesy to extend me a response for which I'm very appreciative. I realize that in this country, we don't have a direct democratic government, we have representative government, and I would appreciate it just as one constituent. We're not overloaded with constituents in here each time I've been here. Very few people come up here. But if I send you an email, I would certainly appreciate it if you had responded to it. Not only that, but I can't for the life of me understand why we can't have these propane companies post a price. Can you articulate any reason why a purveyor of any product would not want to post the price of that product, other than to put the shock on the folks out there that are purchasing this stuff? The only, the people in this county that can least afford to be taken advantage of are the poor people. We have a number of people in this county that have their gas, their heating, paid for by the county. But these folks aren't putting prices up. I can afford it. I was a union representative at Lockheed Martin Aeronautics in Marietta, Georgia, for several years in the collective bargaining process in Burbank, California. I didn't fall off a turnip truck yesterday. I know when people are trying to take advantage of me. And I went in there and they were supposed to give me a two-cent senior discount, which on my account there would have been six or seven bucks. Cost me that much to drive up here and speak to you. But my problem with this whole process is they're taking advantage of the poor people in this county, and you're sitting on your duff and can't even get an answer out of you when I ask you for one. I appreciate your time, and I'd like for you to look at this. It's an important issue. You can go in a hamburger joint and you can get a hamburger for three bucks, and you can get it with lettuce, tomato, mayonnaise, they got a list up there. What comes with that hamburger? But you go in there, some poor soul goes in there that's on welfare, or somebody that's not as articulate or as educated as some of us are, and they're taken advantage of. You know it. I know you know it, those of you that buy this stuff. And in the winter, when it gets cold, when it gets real cold out there, and it gets down like it did two years ago, they really pop it to them. And we sit here and allow them to do it. And I understand these people aren't regulated by the state, but at least you could have them post it inside the building. Put a price up there, so when a man walks in, he can look up there and know what the price is, and somebody's not trying to treat him like he's buying a used car. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ward would just bear with me for a few minutes. I did do a little checking on what Mr. Carney was talking about, and I talked with several people in Beaufort County that run propane companies, Tywater, Swain Gas, and Deathridge Gas Company. And there is a statute that states that the propane company must post their price inside the building. That statute does not say where it's got to be posted. It could be posted in the manager's office behind locked doors, but if it's posted, it's posted. I also talked with a gentleman with the North Carolina Propane Gas Association. His name is John Jacobs, Jessups. And he told me that there was no ordinance that told you that you had to post a price of propane outside of the building. And we checked into that, and that's very true. I did talk with the manager of, who now owns Wimco Hess in Ohio, and he said that there's no ordinance anywhere in the state of North Carolina that even gas companies have to post their prices. That is something that's done out of courtesy to the customer. The propane people supposedly don't want to post it outside as a courtesy, so they don't have to. So that's what I checked on. Hope that's some help to you, Mr. Carney. I appreciate you coming in and bringing this to our attention. Thank you very much.
Could you do something to put that in the building, so people could see it? An ordinance that would...
There is an ordinance, a state statute, they have to post that. They don't have to post it, they have to post it on the inside. They don't have to post it out at the desk or anything. Do you want something? Okay, all right, thank you. All right. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent.
I have a motion to approve, I have a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Six, one. Items for discussion, Marty Johnson.
Just give me a minute. Okay, good evening. Thank you for giving me, providing me this time to talk about economic development in Beaufort County. It's happened in the last year. Can't believe it's been a year since I started here. It's all gone very, very quickly. And from this first slide, I was just trying to show that economic development is a team undertaking, and that there are many organizations involved with what I do in Beaufort County. Currently, Beaufort County, which is part of Region Q, has an unemployment rate of 6.4%. The jobs created in Region Q over the last 90 days are in the fields of healthcare, transportation, retail services, and food services, food preparation. The relatively, Beaufort County's unemployment rate is quite good. Just depends who you compare us to, really. We're slightly higher than the region, which is at 6.2%, but we are lowest in the region behind Pitt County. However, compared to the state as a whole, which is at 5.4%, and some of the larger metropolitan areas, which are at 4.5%, we are lagging behind those areas. One other concern that I have is our labor force, which since 2011, which stood then at about 21,500, has reduced to about 19,500 in 2015. I believe the cause is for this automation of many jobs, people obviously leaving and taking jobs elsewhere, maybe particularly in Pitt County, people that have two or more part-time jobs, which only get counted as one person, retirements, and obviously discouraged workers. Over the past year, Beaufort County has received 58 inquiries from projects looking for locations in North Carolina. The sources of these inquiries have been evenly divided, pretty much, between calls to the Beaufort County Economic Development Department, the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, and the North Carolina East Alliance. Sorry, the numbers don't come out very well. Looked good on my computer screen. 54% of the inquiries are for buildings, 24% for sites, 10% for either a building or a site, and 12% for expansion of existing facilities. In terms of the industries, it's a very diverse group, but the top four are metalworking, plastics, agriculture, and aerospace. A number of projects have been completed in the county over the last year. Spinrite finished their project with the creation of 81 jobs and investment of $1.1 million, and for that, they received a $180,000 equipment grant from the One North Carolina Organization. Additionally completed was for the Beaufort County Industrial Park at Chaco Winnity, with plans and pricing project for, to enable us to show what could happen on this particular site. For this, we used a Duke Energy Grant of $7,000, and a match for that was the fees we received from the farmer that farms that land. This is an example of one of the conceptual drawings that we have. This is a 60,000-square-foot plastic injection molding plant on rail. So the idea is to provide to an inquiring project a clearer picture of what might be possible on a particular site. Projects that are underway, we have a, we're working with Electricities, and they have granted us $25,000 to do similarly to what we did at Chaco Winnity at the Washington Beaufort County Industrial Park. This project will provide up-to-date data and detailed information on the park, plus, as you can see from that top-right drawing, provide building site layouts to gain, to again, give companies that are looking at the park an idea of what might be able to be developed on any particular site. Staying at the Washington Beaufort County Industrial Park, we are in the process of constructing the extension of the road back to US 264. This will allow trucks more easy access and ability to move around the area more easily. To other grants that are underway is the Tavernet Jack's Neck is renovating additional space with the help of a building reuse grant, investing additional $80,000 and creating eight jobs. Hopefully, everybody's seen the East Carolina dealership on US 264, which is well underway. Hopefully, it'll be finished by Christmas, and that will create 35 new jobs with an investment of $4 million. The help here that's going to be provided is through the community college and the school system in the form of training and potential apprenticeships. Also underway in the county is the hotel, the new hotel on West 15th Street. That should create 20 jobs with $6.8 million worth of investment. For this, we received a $100,000 infrastructure grant. Additionally, Oak Ridge Industries is expanding, which will create 32 jobs with a $1.4 million investment and a $320,000 building reuse grant for their expansion. IDX has received a $480,000 building reuse grant for renovation of the offices on their building. This should create 48 jobs with $1.8 million worth of investment. So, we have a project that's in transition, and that's the VOA site. Our efforts have led to this site being taken up by the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, and they are going to take the whole site as a habitat for the Henslos Sparrow. It is anticipated this, they will take constructive possession of the site in December of this Over the past year, we've also interacted with the communities in Beaufort County to assist them with their economic development concerns. There's a few of them listed there, and hopefully, over time, these efforts will lead to a payoff. Similarly to the communities, over the past year, we've interacted with Retention Expansion Call Program with the businesses of Beaufort County to assist them with their needs and concerns. This has led to a number of plans for collaboration projects, particularly around the need for a skilled workforce. Which brings us to the Skills Center. One of the ways we are trying to create skilled workforce is providing space in the Skills Center to the Community College to hold classes specifically related to the needs of Beaufort County industry. These classes currently are the core curriculum for the National Center for Construction, Education, and Research, forklift operation, HVAC, industrial maintenance, welding both MIG and TIG. So that space is being used on a daily basis. We've had a lot of marketing events, and we've done these in association with our allies, particularly the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, North Carolina East Alliance, and the Pitt County EDC. But whether these have been events or printed materials, they're designed to increase the awareness of Beaufort County to businesses looking to locate in mid-eastern USA. The last one is our goals. And just to summarize here, our goals in sum up to saying that the economic development aims is to engage in a team approach to increasing existing and new businesses, understanding that Beaufort County is a profitable place to do business. It's a quick five minutes. So, does anybody have any questions?
I have one question.
Yes.
On the Dodge Chrysler dealership out on 264, you said it was 34 jobs.
Yes.
That would create, are they transferable, transferred jobs, or are they going to be new jobs that taken in Beaufort County?
My understanding is they are new jobs, yes. To, yeah, they're not moving. They, what they'll probably do is actually move some people from Greenville to here, but just to manage, to bring some experience into the shop, but the actual job won't move.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for Marty?
Good job.
Thank you, Marty, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Deputy Charlie Rose.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners.
This is an item that I've got is informational. A couple of meetings ago, there was a presentation that was, that was performed for you guys in reference to an assessment being done on the jail and on the inmate population and of the court system in general. I'd already had a conversation with, with the county manager in reference to an assessment that the sheriff was looking into having, having done at the same time, that it falls under a lot of the same guidelines of that presentation, but it's through a different organization, and it would be federally funded with no funds that would, that would need to come from, from the county. And the information packet that you have is the, the name of the organization is the National Institute of Corrections. That is part of the Department of Justice in reference to the prison system. They, what they do is, is that they'll go through, and once we apply for services, they'll take the assessment, or they'll take the needs that we are asking for. They would bid out with different companies and different organizations that go along with them and bid out those needs, and then they would send a team down to Beaufort County to interview the stakeholders. So they would interview commissioners, they would interview the sheriff, they would interview judges, the district attorney, the defense counsel for those, and so they can really get a good picture and understanding of who we are housing in our detention facility, whether they're pre-trial detainee, or whether they're, they're spending time there because of sentences and things of that nature, the same, the same type of information that was provided before. What they'll also do is that they'll, they'll take what they learned from, from that assessment, and then they'll, they'll help the community. They'll help us as a community and as a board, understand what their findings are. They're not to come in and, and say, all right, well, Beaufort County is saying that they need a new facility, and this is the way that we can help you get that. They actually come in and look at what you have, and they may come back with the information saying that you have more than what you need, or that you have what you need, or, or that could be part of that process. In starting, in getting things starting with that, the sheriff had to apply for those services, and there's a copy of that, of his letter that, that we sent to them. And you can see that the specific part that we were asking for help on is called the JJSA, or the Jail and Justice System Assessment. The other items on that handout that you got, we did not request or apply for, but that could be something that later on, if a decision's ever made to upfit the facility that we have, or to move to a new facility, that they would be available to, to help in that endeavor as well, using information that they've gotten previously. So once again, this was just for information for the Board of Commissioners, but if you have any questions, I would try to fill those if I can.
Anybody have anything for Chief Deputy Rose?
Chairman.
Yes.
Do you have any kind of a timeframe when you hope that this is done?
The information that I've received from NIC is that it's probably going to be somewhere the end of January, moving into mid-February, when they can get their information, get the team together, and have them on the ground here in Beaufort County.
Thank you.
Ms. Jim?
Go ahead.
I'd like to thank the sheriff and chief deputy for moving forward on this initiative. I think it's long overdue, and I look forward to the results this day.
Thank you.
Anything else from anyone? Okay, well, while you're up there, Chief, is, we have another item for you, another item for decision.
Yes, sir. You'll see the information that I sent for, that's a request for funding to make some repairs to existing items in the detention center. The first item is in reference to replacing the round system in the detention center. The cost of that request is $1,184. The round system in general, that has been an item that has given us trouble over the last several years, and has been cited specifically as some of the deficiencies that we've received and some of the inspections. What that system is, is each, each jailer has a, has a fob, or, you know, it looks like a key fob that you would have with your car. But as they go through, when they do their, their rounds through the jail, as they actually lay eyes on all of the inmates and go through, that for each block, there is a section on the wall that they would put the key fob on, and you would get a beep, and you would get a light indicator that, that that round has been met. That's done after each round for each block and section of the detention center. The problems that we've had with that, that system is, is that it was, the brains of that system is a personal computer. And as that system got older and older and older, we got to the point where we could not upgrade it because of the format of the computer itself. And we were, we were told time and time again that it would be costly, that you couldn't do it without doing construction. Well, we found, after talking to several other vendors, that you can do that, and that we can use the existing conduit and run an entirely new system in there to replace that. And that doesn't mean that if we're not doing rounds, that that's not going to be And that doesn't mean that if we're not doing rounds, that that's not going to be seen as a deficiency, but it means that if we have the capability and we have the equipment that's functioning, if we are doing those rounds, which we feel that we are, that it's going to show that. And that's the only way that the Department of Health and Human Services sees that round as being administered timely and correctly. So, so that is that fix.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
You said that you found a vendor that said you could do it without doing all this new wiring and stuff?
Yes, sir.
Have you seen any of that work?
Yes, sir. The vendor that we're dealing with now, they have been dealing with us with 911 Center for years.
Have you seen any of that work, that they went in a building, that they didn't have to do a new wiring?
Not specifically, no, sir. But the, the level of work that this vendor has done for us in the past, and we're continuing to work with them on all of the jobs they have, they're straight shooters, and they'll fly out, they've told us no before, that we have asked them to extend projects and to do things, and they have told us that if they can't do it, then, then they've told us in the past.
It's not that, it's not that I don't believe the vendor. But you've got some of these salesmen can sell a blind, a blind man pennies to put over his eyes and tell him to help him see.
Yes, sir.
So we want to make sure, if they tell us that they can do this, when they go in, that's what we expect.
Yes, sir.
I got one thing. You say you're going to use the existing conduit.
Yes.
So all they will do is just pull the old wire out?
Yes.
And run new wire?
Yes.
And you've looked at the old conduit, and that, that is in good shape?
Yeah, we, it's Gately Incorporated Signal One Engineering, the vendors that we're dealing with. Recently, within the last month, we've had an engineer from Signal One, the president of Gately, and our local tech that comes in and does the work. We all went through the jail, we were looking at the locking mechanisms, we were looking at the, at this part of the product, as well as the cameras that we'll talk about in the next couple of minutes, to make sure that what we're putting before the commissioners is that we're ready to move on, that we're ready to move on. So, and, and I feel satisfied. And once again, they are a business, and they are trying to make money, but in the past, with, with the way that we have done things with vendors, is, is that they get the opportunity to live up to the word that they say they will. And if they don't, then we look for other vendors that can. And I don't see where that would be any different with, with this job or this vendor.
Mr. Chairman, we can do separate, separate motions, or all three of them together?
Do you want to?
Do we want to do separate motions for each one?
I think we can do all one.
The second request is for $976.30. What this looks to address is state law and several other standards that are set as best practices throughout the country, has that inmates and the staff at the detention center or jail or prison, whatever it is, should have two-way access to each other, that should be able to be set off by the inmates or the staff. Right now, we have a public address system that the control is all in the control room, meaning that if something is going on inside the blocks, the inmates that are in there have to do something that's contrary to rules, to show the, the jailer that something's going on, and to call into the block, so they can, they can talk, they can speak back and forth. What this request does is that we're actually going to look to install a ruggedized button or signal that can be pressed to signal the control room, that, that could start the conversation back and forth. Where this is, is really important to us, is, is that if we're relying on the person who's watching the monitors in the control room, that same person that's watching the monitors may be answering the phone, maybe, maybe answering a question if someone calls in, to see if an individual's in the jail, or what sort of bond they have. If they are having to stop looking at the monitors to look something up on the computer, that's taking away from them looking at the monitors, which is their primary function. And it might take three seconds or five seconds to miss a signal, but if that plunger is hit, then that can, that can be the way to indicate the jailers that there is a problem and, and could, could stop an emergency from happening before it actually gets started. So, so that's what that, that request is for. The third request, this item is $65,204.26. That item is to completely upgrade and re-outfit the surveillance system that's in the detention center. Right now, we are functioning with about 20 cameras. With the facility that we have, that has a lot of bends and curves and curls in it, we don't have very good line of sight. We don't have good line of sight when the officers are walking through the facility, but we also have a lot of blind spots that aren't covered by the cameras. This is a new request, all three of these are new. The information that, that we're bringing before you really started in July, when we had Lieutenant Catherine Bryan was brought in as our new jail administrator, the sheriff and I asked her to do an assessment of the jail, to go through and let us know, let us know the good, the bad, and the ugly of what we're dealing with. What, what do we have in front of us? And what we can fix, or what we need to fix immediately, and what we can wait on some of the other things. So that, that's what she did. The first conversation that I had with her before she even completed the, her assessment was, I asked her what's the biggest issue that she's seeing, and it was line of sight. It was the lack of, or it was the blind spots that are inside the jail. I mean, she, so I asked her, I said, "Show me." I said, "I, I hear what you're saying, but show me what you're talking about." So we did. We were looking at the monitors together, and we had a detention officer go into the jail, and I can actually see where inside the block we could see them, as opposed to where we couldn't, and there was a lot of blind spots that were in there. The second part of that was, is that I asked her how immediate we needed to address this. How immediate? Is this something that we could wait until the next budget process to do that? Because I knew that that was going to be a question as far as the timing that would come from the board. The answer that she gave me, I knew it was important, because she was looking for other places and other areas in the budget that we could move funds around, and she actually included the video visitation. And I told her no. I told her, based on the history that we have had, just, just with that particular part of the jail, that, that is not something that we can move around. But that told me how, how serious it was, that we were looking at that, and for the next month, month and a half, we put different things together, and that, that led up to the, the information that you have here. So it was very important for us to get this done, and we've got, we've got the vendor that's in place that we do trust, that's where we've gotten the quotes from, and we're, we're looking to move on this as, as quickly as we can to try to shore up and make that facility as safe as it can be for the inmates that are in it, and for the officers that, that are working there every day. Does, does anyone have any questions?
Anyone have anything?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
This is to the manager. Have you looked at the budget to see, to tell me the projected surpluses within the sheriff's department, or deficits to date?
Mark, I can't address that, but they're about where they need to be. I mean, if you look year to year, they're roughly running about where they need to be.
In other words, you're saying that we're on budget?
You're, you're roughly on budget. A little bit above on some, a little bit below on others, but roughly overall, you're about on.
So there's not a surplus?
That's true.
There's not a projected surplus?
We don't project one, that's true. At this time, I mean. There, there, of course, there are things that could change. I mean, in their business, inmate medical could blow a budget all to pieces. It just depends on who you have coming in, so.
Yeah, I know, but usually, at the end of the year, every year for the last, I don't know, number of years, we've had surpluses within the various jail budgets.
That's right.
So why don't we have them this year? Because that budget was increased.
If I may, if I may add to that.
Go ahead.
The lines that we carry surpluses just about every year are at a point where if nothing happens tomorrow or through the year, then we will have surpluses. We just can't bank on that. I believe, Commissioner Booth, you and I had a, had a conversation on it during the budget time.
And I'm not going to lie to you. I told you this was going to happen, didn't I?
Yes, sir.
You had six hun, in six months, you had your chest stuck out, in six months, we say $653,000. And six months later, you got $50,000. I rest my case.
If I may, I don't believe the assessment is, is that accurate?
Well, that's what you say. I believe that, too.
And I told you during that budget workshop, that if I was wrong on some of the cuts that we made, that I would come back and I would tell you that I was wrong.
You did.
I'm not ready to make that statement yet.
Well, I, well, I'll tell you this, Chief. I appreciate the fine lady, because she just verified some of the things that we said that was wrong to start with.
Yes, sir.
It's nothing new.
Yes, sir.
Those blind spots been there since the jail been there.
Yes, sir.
And, and I got to tell you again, you did tell us you had a surplus, it was all over the paper.
Yes, sir. And we did.
At least y'all need to do our budget. That was in the paper, too.
Okay. We did have a surplus last year.
Yes.
If things go on like they're going right now, we will have a sizable surplus in the same lines that we've had before. That's safekeeping, we had a, we had a line item of $200,000 in the budget, so far, we've used $9,000 of that. If, if we needed to, I feel confident that we could do a budget amendment on those same lines that we cut. But then, just like you've mentioned before, if the lights go out tomorrow, and I've got to send every inmate out of there for a month at a time, then I'll have to come back to you again. And at that point, I'll probably come with a statement of, yeah, we did cut too much, but I'm not ready to now, because the funds are there.
Okay.
You know, on the lines. We, we front-end load with the way that we purchase equipment, and even with that front-end loading, I feel confident with the numbers that I see, backed up with conversations that I've had with the county manager and the finance officer, to believe that the numbers are there. Otherwise, I would not be standing here before you.
I believe you.
Yes, sir.
But I just couldn't lie to you.
Mr. Chairman, when everybody else gets the chance, I have another question. With what you just said, and what you just said, if you've only used $9,000 in safekeeping, you've got a $200,000 budget, and you're five months into the process, you've got about $80,000 surplus in that one account right now, you've got enough money to pay for this. You know, I don't have a problem with doing the things that you're talking about doing, but you can come back to us for more money when it's justifiable. I don't think we have ever turned anybody down. I'm just trying to save the taxpayers some money and not leave that money sitting there to be shifted off and spent for something else.
I understand, and I agree. And if that's the way that the, that the board wishes, then the sheriff and I feel that it's important enough to move on this now.
When, when do you want to, when do you want to start this project, as soon as possible?
I've got, I've got purchase orders in my folder right now, that if, if it is approved, that we'll make contact with the vendor and set up the time for them to do the construction on, on bringing this in.
Okay. Mr. Langley?
And I spoke with you earlier about this, the, the cameras that, and all the equipment that you're going to be purchasing. If there's a new facility, it will go to the new facility?
Yes, sir. Well, it has the capability, that, it has the capability. If, if we, if we were to build a new facility, if we were to move into a new facility tomorrow, there would still be a need to have a facility at the basement of the, of the courthouse where it is now. So there would still need to be some of those systems in place, but yes, all of the equipment that we're looking to put in to the detention center now would be able to be moved to a new facility.
Mr. Chairman, now, explain that, Charlie, why you would still need a system now. This would just be for court, right? I mean...
Yes.
I mean, you're just transferring them in for court that day and back to the new jail that night.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Yeah, so you're not talking about a whole, I mean, I want the public to understand, we're not talking about keeping 60 inmates down there, 60 in a new jail. We're talking about bringing in however many they want for court that day.
That's correct.
And back that night, I didn't want there to be any misunderstanding on the part of the public, because how many, how many would you generally have for a day in court?
If it's district court, and district court alone, it might be anywhere from a half dozen to a dozen.
Yeah.
If we're running, if we're running four different courts with administrative Superior Court, then it might be two dozen people that we would have actually in our detention facility that would need to go up to court. So, with, you know, with the plans of, if you do have to transport them in, you know, you want it to be one time in, one time out, you know, not, not throughout the, the course of the day. So we would still need to have a temporary detention facility somewhere inside that, that courthouse.
The one thing to me that, that you're never going to solve with cameras or anything else is, is number eight in your jail administrators' dialogue, segregation of prisoners. There is no way to segregate prisoners in the current system. I mean, you don't have two individual cells.
You are correct. You are correct.
And... That's not wholly correct.
Well, let me finish, and then you can discount everything I say.
Yeah, keep going.
You have, you have basically group holding areas. Is that not correct? You don't, you don't have, but, as my understanding, there are 85 cells in that jail, 13 are for women, which is a group holding area, two are individual cells, and the rest is other holding areas, where you cannot put an individual by himself. Am I right or wrong on that?
You, you are correct. If I may, 85 is the max if the numbers are right on the money.
Right.
You know, if we have 85 adult males, that would be what our capacity would be. But anytime that you've got a female, then that means that there's got to be a block for females.
From my understanding, that was a 13, that was a capacity of 13.
With the block that we use right now, yes, sir.
Yes, and you're subtracting 13 from 85, if you have a woman inmate.
That, yes, that is correct. And also...
Then your two gives you 15 from 85, so basically, you're able to handle 70 males if you have a female inmate, and, and two individual cells, so 72 males, unless you have a juvenile, in which case you can't put a male in there.
I can, I can make this answer as complicated as you want me to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want it too complicated, I just want to know.
It is, and the, it's almost like playing a shell game.
Yeah.
That if you've got adult males, if you've got males that are 16 or 17, then you've got to house those differently. Females, you have to house differently. If you've got somebody who's sick or hurt, you have to house them differently. If there are behavior issues, you have to house them differently. We'll also have, if multiple suspects are arrested for the same crime, we try to keep those people together, or keep them away from each other, excuse me. Sorry about that. We al, we also have a history of, you know, the people that work in the detention facility, they become masters at solving problems before they become problems. So you'll have people that are, we'll call them frequent flyers, that one, just can't be housed with this person, no matter what the circumstances are. So we'll, we'll play that. But what we also use is, we try to utilize everything that we have to our means to try to get the job done effectively, which means that there are times where we will utilize facilities that are outside of the county to help us out with the different segregation and the different things that we have to do to stay, to, to stay legal and also to do our jobs as effectively as we can, because just, the investigation might not end at a time of the arrest. You know, there are times where investigators are still having to question people, where we're still gathering information on crimes that have occurred, so we also have to be mindful of that as well, and we are mindful of that. So I hope that answered your question at least a little bit.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, but basically, you still just have, other than those 15 places to hold them, you just have, from my understanding, two larger areas.
We have, no, it's, it's multiple blocks.
How many more, how many, how many blocks?
We have A through, A block through H block.
So you have seven? Eight?
Eight, eight blocks.
Eight blocks.
Eight blocks, with the two segregation blocks, two single cells, that's G block.
G block.
Which are, which are usually full. We usually have, we usually have, have someone inside those cells at all times.
Is one of A through H the one that would handle the females?
That's C block.
That would be C. So really, you have, for adult male prisoners, you basically have six blocks outside of those, those two blocks.
Yes.
The female in there.
Yes.
That's what I was trying to get at the whole time, six blocks to handle.
Well, that was easy, you should have just asked that way.
So six blocks to handle, basically 50 prisoners.
I've got, I've got two, two questions to add. I think the segregation question's been cleared up. How long with this video system that's going to be installed, will you be warehousing or storing the data before throwing it out?
We, we typically, at least 90 days. At least 90 days. That is, the, seems to be an industry standard. And with the way, we, we don't use the cloud, you know, we use internal hard drives to, to keep the data. 90 days is what we keep everything. If there is anything of evidentiary value, that is immediately put to disk and backed up, so it could be entered into evidence, and then that's kept for whatever the crime is. If it's a misdemeanor, it'll be kept for at least two years after the adjudication of the crime. If it's a felony, we may have to keep that forever. You know, we may have to keep that indefinitely. You know, we may have to keep that indefinitely. But the actual information that's on the hard drive, we'll keep that for at least 90 days or until the server starts to get to the point where we need to do some maintenance. But that's at least 90 days out.
Well, the second part is totally different, switching gears. There are about 72 people, 74 people in the jail, according to the jail report that's in this book. Going through that report, there are eight or nine people that have been in there for longer than six months. One person is in there for identity theft, who has a $5,000 bond, and they've been in there for, I believe, it's 17 months. At $50 a day, we can afford to pay his bond...
I told you.
And put him out on the street. So, and I will say this, for all the pressure that I have put on the district attorney in the past, I have sent the district attorney emails in the past, every two or three months, saying, you got, you know, it looks like you got these people in there. What are they still doing there? He has responded very well. And so I sent him an email today, and he responded the same way that he's been responded. Thank you very much. I wasn't aware of this. I'll look into it. Usually, these people disappear within a month or two after he gets that particular email. So if you take eight people off of the 72 that's in there, you're back to 64 people. 64 people in a jail that is supposed to hold 85 people. I'm very concerned in the interest of the public and your $20 million that we're even talking about in new jail in here today. And very concerned, and I'm also concerned, the letter that the sheriff has sent has some implications in it, that it looks like he's asking for a study for a new jail to the federal agency. And I've dealt with that federal agency. They come to a lot of events, conventions, commissioners have... And I've talked to them several times. They're very nice people. They're very competent people. And so, but I am concerned that we're back into talking about building a new jail. We thought we had dodged that bullet, and by keeping the pressure on the system that we have and managing to, as the chief said today, managing what we have to its best ability, we're being very successful in avoiding spending this $20 million that has been, that people have wanted to spend in the past. And I intend to continue to be successful in avoiding spending that $20 million.
If I may, now, Mr. Chairman. The application that was sent, the information that we sent, that is in reference to the entire project of, you know, NIC will assist in letting the individuals know if they need a new jail, if they are going to move forward, then they'll help along that process. The part that we've asked for is for specifically that, the jail and justice system assessment and only the jail and justice assessment.
Well, we need to retype this letter because that's not what it says.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward and authorize the replacement of the round system for a cost of $1,184. As part of that motion, I'd also like to include the intercon system for a cost of And also, as part of that motion, to upgrade the surveillance system at a cost of $65,204.26 for a total cost of $67,364.56. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
I just want to go back to what Commissioner Richardson said, that they would go ahead and spend it out of the money that they already have.
That's what I would like to do. I would like to ask Commissioner...
And I was going to say that, too.
To amend that, spend it out of money that's already in the budget. And they can come back to us if they need money for special purposes.
Do you have enough to do what you need to do?
Yes.
Do you think you'll take that out of that fund, that transfer in prisoners fund?
If given the opportunity, I'd like to speak with the finance officer, and we may do like we've done before. It may come out of eight or nine different lines. If we can do that.
I don't have a problem.
I mean, I don't care. I was just saying.
But yes, mainly, probably services for professional medical, image, safekeeping, and possibly meals would be probably the biggest three.
That's what I was trying to think of.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Richardson, would you like to make an amendment?
I can amend my motion.
Pardon?
Do you want me to amend my motion?
If you will amend that.
I'll amend the motion. And I'll amend the motion to include that the amount of $67,364.56 at the sheriff's and the chief deputy's discretion will remove it from whatever fund they want to remove it from. But also, as part of that, if they see that the funds that they remove the money from is there becomes a need for it, that they can come back before this board and get that money replenished.
Chief, you said the captain wanted to move some money from another fund, and you told him not to bother that. What was that fund?
That was for video visitation.
So this is still off limits? Video conferencing money is still off limits before it's taken that?
It is still one of the priorities that we have to implement video visitation fully.
I understand, but when you made the motion to get the funds from wherever you can, seven, eight, nine line items, video conferencing wasn't one of them, I hope.
We're going to need every dime in that line to implement the system that we'll do.
Okay. That's why I left it up to them.
Okay. We have amended to the motion. Do I have a second to that amendment?
I'll second.
Have a second to the amendment. All in favor? Is there any further discussion on that? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Seth, there I am.
There I am, thank you. Evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. Coming before you all tonight with an additional proposed property donation in Bellhaven. This will be the third landowner that has come to staff in the last several months. This staff is contacted by Mr. Brantley Tillman, who represents the partnership, four total partners that own this particular piece. And it's adjacent to the existing, the Coopridge Track that the county has an existing relationship with moving towards the donation or acceptance of that property. This individual piece is 7.46 acres. For those of with a snipe, it's located in the south, southern corner intersection of West Main Street and Highway 99, when you come across the bridge there in Bellhaven. So this piece would be bordered by the Coopridge Track to the east and the public docks downtown, going towards downtown to the east. The site's comprised of approximately five acres of upland area, dry area, approximately 2.6 acres of wetlands. You've got a few maps in your packet that help illustrate that.
Can you repeat what you just said? How many acres of?
The total acreage here is 7.45 acres or 4.6 acres of that land. Approximately five acres is what they call upland or...
Good land.
Good land, that's right. Issue-free land, hopefully, to begin with at least. Unlike the Coopridge Track, county's not aware of any previous environmental assessments about this land. We don't have any data that was handed to us along with the proposed donation. So it'd be staff's recommendation to contract with a consultant to have a Phase One environmental assessment done so we can just get an idea of what conditions might exist on the ground. The subject parcel can also be added to the existing brownfields application with NC Department of Environmental Quality that we currently have going with additional existing properties. So to move forward with that, we've got a proposal in your packet, total cost of $1,700 if we were to contract with ECS to perform a Phase One and also update that existing brownfield application with the state force. Also, over the pleasure of the board, staff recommend contracting with ECS to prepare the Phase One environmental site assessment and update the brownfield application to include the subject 7.46 acre parcel. And in the event that the Phase One indicates no significant environmental liabilities, direct staff to move forward with accepting this site as well.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. Any discussion?
I would like to... Seth, do you know if there's anything ever been on there, bro? Or has it just always been just vacantly?
I don't know. I imagine it's had some use in the past.
I can answer that question.
I would like to hear that.
There are some old, small brick buildings that are very deteriorated on the properties. I think probably people have probably lived on it before. It is a good idea to get the environmental assessment in this particular case. And I do need to disclose that this is the piece of property that you've heard me mention before, that I've worked on the water and sewer to serve, that the Ross family across the property that the Ross family is giving to the county. So I did that for the town of Bellhaven. That work is incomplete, and if this goes through, that work will be stopped where it is because there's no need for that work.
So you don't know... I guess the question, there's not been anything like a gas station or anything like that?
No. It's across the railroad track. You couldn't get to it. Now, there may be something that would have been used. It was originally, this was a part of what is now the Ross property that they're donating. So the property was probably used for the same uses that was used for, although to a much lesser extent insofar as risk goes. So it's still a good idea to get the environment Phase One on it.
Did the sewage stream run across that?
There's no sewage running across.
That piece of property will fall under the environmental for the Brown project?
You could. I mean, if something significant came back after the Phase One, then you could roll it up, like Seth said, roll it up into the existing brownfields application that we have in play now, and they would just accept that into that.
Okay.
It was all the same piece of property at one time. Through real estate deals, this piece was cut off from the original Ross property where the smokestack is.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Was there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, 7-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Seth. Budget amendment, John Fleming.
Go ahead. Evening, commissioners. In your packets, we bring forward a budget amendment to bring up the staffing of the ambulants for the Bath Township at the paramedic level and two paramedic level QRVs. One would be stationed on the south side in the Blunts Creek area, and one on the north side of, in the 264 corridor in that area. We are asking to hire 12 full-time paramedics and four EMT intermediates and a part-time staff.
Could you repeat that? Could you repeat that?
Sure. We will be hiring 12 full-time paramedics, four EMT intermediates, and a staff of part-timers.
How many part-time?
Probably about 10, at least 10 part-timers to cover any vacations or illnesses or injuries of the full-time staff.
And part-time, is that part of this thing, giving us the money, salaries, definitely?
We have a part-time 512, 512, 600.
Okay, got you. I missed that.
So it's listed under a part-time line item?
32,000.
Those might not necessarily be actual positions. I mean, you don't... We do part-time folks like that based on money. So it doesn't... We may hire 15, but we only use them a certain amount of time. But we only have five or six. So it depends on what money we have. You're not hiring actual positions, full-time positions.
PRN, basically, that would basically describe as PRN staff.
Yeah, got you. I just missed it. I didn't see it.
So the budget amendment that attaches to the general fund is 203,000.
That's correct.
Yeah. And that takes us through the end of June...
That's correct.
Next year, June the 30th.
That is correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add, I want to make sure the public realize, it's my understanding that eight of these paramedics are to go on the QRVs.
That's correct.
And the public... Tell the public what a QRV is, John, and where they're going to be located. This is something new.
A QRV is a single paramedic in a SUV, emergency response vehicle. It has all the equipment and drugs and supplies that is required on a paramedic-level ambulance. What that does is get a paramedic first responder to a incident without waiting on a delay from a unit coming from another area. So it closes up a gap where we don't have paramedic coverage. And we have identified, it's Blunts Creek, it takes at least 25-plus minutes to respond to areas in Blunts Creek. So Blunts Creek will have a paramedic quick response vehicle stationed in the Blunts Creek area. And then we're looking at putting one on the north side or other to cover the Pine Town, Long Ingershaw Township, out towards Pantigo, to get a QRV, paramedic first responder to that area as well. And they will start treatment and before waiting on a transport unit to get on scene. Just because of the long drive time and the transport times, response times getting there, these are getting the paramedics to the scene at a quicker amount of time.
And the other eight pieces?
Well, I'm sorry. We got...
The ambulance.
Correct.
This is not a QRV. We're talking about an ambulance.
Right. The ambulance itself will be in the Bath Township.
Tell the cameras where they're going to be.
I'm sorry. The ambulance is going to be stationed in the Bath Township. That is an area that we do not have a paramedic-level ambulance. It's a fairly large area with citizens that's not being covered, with the exception of some volunteer squads. We will be staging a paramedic, it'll be a paramedic and EMT intermediate team, and they work... And the scheduling is on a 24/72 rotation, it'll be on 24 hours a day. And so one every three days, they'll be on shift.
24 hours a day, seven days a week.
That's correct. Yeah. We're completely covered. And this will give us a uniform umbrella of minimum coverage of a paramedic anywhere in this county with these three vehicles.
That's all I have.
Okay. What's the flavor of the board? Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Hold on. Hold on. Hold on. Yeah, I have some grave concerns about what we're stepping off into here. I don't think this has been fully explained to the public, what we're getting into. Basic service is one thing that the county has been pretty well covered by. The EMT level of service is a much higher level of service. You're not really going to have that many calls for EMT service. What you're going to wind up doing with most of these drugs is throwing them away. They'll never be used because you're not going to have that high of a level of people to call on because you don't have that much population to serve. So I support a lower level of service, which has been working in Beaufort County. What people also need to be aware of is you're doing away with all of the structure of what's been provided here up till now by the volunteer units. Because once you start this, then you can say it's only going to serve a little part of the county. It's going to destroy the structure of these units that are here now, and you're going into a whole new world in medical care. You need to understand that. You also need to understand that using volunteers to run something like this, not volunteers, but using part-time people to run this is sheer lunacy, simply because these are guys that work full-time at other places, and you have a primary employment. And I've had to look at plenty of employees and say, you need to decide whether you're going to work here or you're going to work somewhere else because I don't mind you working part-time somewhere else, but you have a prime responsibility, and that is to this job. And just let me know what you're going to do. I really don't care, but I've got to run this job. Now, when you have emergencies, when the call goes out with a hurricane and all these other things that go on in eastern North Carolina, or whatever disaster might happen, then these people are going to report to where they work. They are not going to report to Beaufort County. Beaufort County will not be covered. So this is one big problem. There's some fallacy in this budget because these guys are sitting here telling you that they're approving a $230,000 or $280,000 budget. That's not true. That's not even close to the truth. What they're doing is approving in their, using their numbers, and these are not my numbers because my numbers disagree with these numbers. They are approving a $943,000 budget for six months. Oh, gee, that's a $1.9 million budget for the whole year. And what I'm telling you is, when this is over with, you're talking about a $3 million budget, if you use Hood Richardson's numbers. You're stepping off into a whole new world of expense that, when you do this. Another big fallacy on this is Viident did it to you again. You're stepping off into a whole new world of expense that, when you do this. Another big fallacy in this is Viden did it to you again. And the way they did it to you again is, they donated that half a million dollars. Everybody's jumped out, oh gee, that's free money, isn't that wonderful? Well, what they did is, they took this $940,000 budget, they found a little scratch to put with it, and subtracted the $500,000 from it, and that's how they got to the $280,000 or the $300,000 budget that they want you to think that they are approving tonight. They are not approving that. So the $500,000 from Viden is nonrecurring money. You need to ask yourself, why would a hospital give a half a million dollars to Beaufort County, just give it away? Why do they do that? I can tell you, there's two reasons. If you've been reading newspapers lately, you know part of those reasons. Viden has some serious operating problems. Viden is already being dinged by the people, by the feds and Medicare and Medicaid. The amount of money that they get paid for seeing patients is reduced several percentage points. And the reason is because they have too many reoccurring cases where people have to go back and be readmitted. Well, the federal government figured out they're spending double on patients when they do that, so they've started coming down on it. So, and you heard the consultant, who's a very knowledgeable guy, who was here last month, say, oh, you're going to get paid for doing some medical service. Well, the medical service, the reason Viden gave us that half a million dollars is, you're going to be keeping from taking patients back to Viden when they've already been there once. Because I can tell you where the pressure is going to come on these EMTs, and that is, John had surgery last week. Now he's been called out on 911 for the EMTs to come and pick him up because he's having some kind of problems. The pressure is going to be put on those EMTs to see to it that John doesn't go back to the hospital, because it messes up Viden's numbers. If you saw the Washington Daily News on Sunday, Viden, under the rating systems, is not rated as an A. They're not rated as a B. They're rated as a C. We are being sucked into, these commissioners that vote for this, are being sucked into a system of Beaufort County having given their hospital away and are now paying for it again, over and over and over. This is about money. This is about business. And you need to be careful what you're getting into here. I don't see liability insurance policies in these budget numbers. They should be in here, because if you think somebody's not going to sue you with the kind of service we're going to be giving, you're wrong. That's going to happen. When you go up to paramedic, your standards are so much higher, you're expected to do so much more and be so much smarter. You are better off providing basic emergency services to get people to the hospital instead of this business of going out saying, a doc in a car is going to save you life, and you don't need a hospital in Bellhaven. This whole thing fits together into a giant mirage that puts money in Viden's pocket and takes it away from you, because after this $910,000 that's approved in this budget, which probably won't, probably they won't spend the first year, I agree, but the first full year, which is beginning in the budget year of next year, you're going to spend that and more too. That half a million dollars is not going to be there. You're going to be coughing up the whole $3 million, and you're going to be looking at the numbers that come out with this, and the numbers are going to say, how many calls were made, and how serious were they, and what were they for? And you're going to be saying, and we're paying that much money to get this small amount of service to do this small benefit. Why don't we look at the basic EMT service and go back, try to go back to somewhere where we were, so we stop bankrupting ourselves? You can run systems like these people are talking about in places like New York City, Washington DC, Philadelphia, Charlotte, North Carolina, and Raleigh, North Carolina. The reason is, you have enough volume to keep the number of units that you have busy. These people are going to be sleeping most of the time, and they're very rarely going to be given the kind of EMT service that's being represented. They give some people calls, we don't have that many people that need that service. But you do have more people that need the basic and intermediate level of service to get to an emergency room. So I'm not going to vote for this, because you're not going to like this when it's over with.
Commissioner Buzzio. Did you have something?
Oh, yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say a couple things. First of all, we have paramedic service currently in this county in a few select areas. And I believe that every resident in this county deserves paramedic service. If you look back into some of the studies, and we talk about pit crews, CPR, we talk about the golden hour, your chances of survival when you have a heart attack or a stroke go up much higher by a large percentage if you're treated immediately at your residence. Not that they throw you in a car or throw you in a truck and transport to you to the hospital. If you have a serious heart attack or stroke, the chances are you'll be dead before you arrive at that facility. Therefore, based upon these statistics, and also the need for emergency care for all our residents, I am going to support this motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Frankie?
All right. John, you and I were talking last night or this morning, and I don't know whether you're willing to share the percentage of the calls.
I...
You defer, or will you answer? Will you report that?
I would say they're poor.
Very poor. We have...
I will leave it at that. I'm not going to point a finger at any of my volunteer squads.
Yeah.
I say that the call responses are poor.
But if you lived in one of those three areas, and it was you that needed help, you wouldn't want us sitting up here arguing over whether we're going to do this or not. I don't think anybody up here admits that this is going to be cheap. I think all the estimates. But my concern is, is that every citizen in this county needs the best safety net that we can get, and paramedics is the way to go. It's not, you know, my wife passed out, fainted at a beauty shop here in Washington three weeks ago, and the Washington squad, paramedics, got there. She was out maybe five minutes. They started an IV and gave her a shot to calm her down. Then they transported her to the ER here in Washington. She was there for 24 hours. You know, when you say that it's cost 500,000 or it cost a million dollars, I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what that's worth. But I can tell you that, as a taxpayer and as a husband of somebody that was affected, you know, I appreciate that. I'm not going to ask any questions about, you know, what it cost. The only thing I can tell you is that they met that need. And I think the citizens, I mean, the people here in Washington are very fortunate. But when you get out in some of the rural areas, which is where 85% of the tax money in this county comes from, 85%, we're entitled to have that. And it's our decision on whether we want to move forward with it. The question, and Commissioner Richardson has raised this, is, how is the best way to fund it? And I think that we need to start moving in that direction, so we start the budget process, that we're beginning to move in the right direction. And I'm not, I'm not in favor of going out there and forcing anything on a local squad. I think we've said all along, and I think what the consultant has said, let's work within the system that we have to try to make it better. And this is the areas that were addressed, that were extremely weakened, and I'm going to support the motion because I think it's the right thing to do. We still have to work on the funding part as we approach the budget in 2017.
Yes, sir. I think we needed to first address the lack of coverage. And then we have, we're working with the county manager and the finance manager. We're moving forward, and that's our next phase in this project, the funding.
Ms. Chairman?
Can I make, can I make one other statement real quick? All my employees I'm hiring are full-time employees of Beaufort County. They are, they, if we have a problem in this county, if a hurricane, they come to me. But they don't go to anybody else. They're my employees. They're employees of Beaufort County. They're Beaufort County first.
I think the part-time salaries for holidays and sick leave and vacation and things like that, they're not to pay the salaries of people who go sit there on a regular basis.
That's correct. If I got somebody, you know, just like any other county employee, they have their right to take vacation. They have, they get sick, they have the right to take a sick day. We have to find the coverage for them, and that's what the PRN staff budgets for.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed? Six zero. After...
Six one.
Six one, I'm sorry. After passing this motion, I'd like to set up a committee to keep abreast of what's going on in the county on this and kind of use it as a liaison between the, yourself and the board. And on that committee, I'd like to have Robert Boucher as chairman, Frankie Waters as co-chair, Ron Buzzio, Brian Alligood, Mark Dooson, and John Fleming on that committee. And Robert, if you would just take that and run with it and let us know what goes on, I would be greatly appreciative.
I'll get with Brian and John and...
Okay. We're going to take a quick 10-minute break. Item four, Commissioner Richardson.
Recall elections. Page 287. We talked about this at the last meeting. The legislature, by a special bill, can provide municipalities and counties in Beaufort County with recall elections. And we discussed this at the last meeting, and I said that I would bring it back for a motion at this meeting. I have my motion here. I fully expect this to go down this way. They're going to vote this motion down, and then they're going to vote not to hear it for six months. Not a problem with me. I have a way of handling that. So I will now read the motion. Whereas because of the limited voting method for electing Beaufort County commissioners, no commissioner is elected by a majority vote. Whereas minority interests have elected a majority of commissioners who have special interests, who serve special interests. And whereas majority interests are regularly subordinated to the special interest. Therefore, I move the Beaufort County commissioners to instruct our legislative delegation to provide us with a draft bill for the purpose of recalling commissioners. That is my motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I make a comment?
You can.
I, I'm not bringing this up for discussion tonight, but I think this is a prime example of one of the changes we need to make in this county. You know, this limited voting is a very unfair system, as far as I'm concerned. And the last time we had a task force, I believe the kids at Eastern Elementary School or Northeast Elementary School in the third grade could have come up with the same solution or a better solution than what the task force did. To me, it's pretty simple. You either allow us to go back to districts and let those districts be the same as the county school board, which is nine, which means the commissioners would go from seven to nine, or you allow voters to vote for four people, if we have four positions, or three people, if there's three positions up. So, yeah, I think we need to go to the legislature, but I'm not sure it's for the recall. I think it's for other reasons. And I think this will continue to be an issue in this county until it's corrected. It's pretty simple. I don't think we have to hire an attorney in Charlotte for us to come up with a solution. It's either or, and that would solve that problem. And it might even solve the problem of needing some kind of a recall.
Mrs. Chairman?
Thank you.
Go ahead. One thing I'd like to add to that, Commissioner Waters, is another option would be to go to maybe to six districts or seven districts and have two at-large positions. Something else to consider. Thank you, Mrs. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we appoint Frankie Waters chairman of the committee to change the method of voting in Beaufort County, and Ron Buzzio vice chairman.
I have a motion.
We got a second?
Got a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Very good.
Okay. We're ready for you guys.
Thank you. We were going to bring it up at the next meeting. You saved us the trouble. You got a committee. All right.
That was, that was simple.
Commissioner Boucher.
Yeah. Last month, we talked about the design shelter, asked Holland to come back at, we asked Holland to come back at the budget session next year. And in the meantime, there was an article published in the Washington Daily News that said that the design shelter likely could close soon due to lack of funds. Went back and did some research on the design shelter. They are a 501(c)(3). They did file their 990 EZ tax form last year. Their financials show that last year, they, in the 2014 calendar year, they had receipts of $42,000 plus or minus, and expenditures of $54,000 plus or minus, about a $12,500 deficit over expenditures over receipts. Brian has been doing some checking, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but at the end of last fiscal year, they seemed to have had a fund balance of around $29,000. That appears to have gone down to between $10,000 and $11,000 now. Is that, is that about right?
Best we can estimate by doing some extrapolation.
So they are, they are, they are in pretty dire straits. My motion tonight is to do a one-time appropriation to the design shelter of $12,500, and hopefully this will carry them through the winter and the coldest months of the year. And then next year, when budget time comes, they can approach the county manager about being included in our budget. The city of Washington does fund them, design shelters at the amount of $7,650 a year right now. It has been as high as $10,000, but during the recession, the city made some cuts to, not just to the design shelter, but across the board. So I put that in the form of motion, $12,500.
What was that motion for, money wise?
Twelve-five.
Twelve-five.
Yeah, which was about exactly how much they were in the red last year.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I've got, just a second.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm going to support this motion, and I want to tell you the reason why. You've been at the first stage, getting ready to approach winter months. And whether you believe it or not, you're going to finance and fund it anyway. To close the shelter, you're going to pay that $65 a day or longer at the county jail. So it's better to do it here, where people are manageable, they're not tearing up this town, they're just feeling the bad luck. This is a wise thing to do, with the winter months coming very, very fast. And I'm going to support this motion.
Okay. I'd just like to say something on this. I'm going to support this motion myself, but I do want the shelter to come during our budget session and make a proposal, so we can, we can put this in our budget, and if we want to continue supporting, which apparently I think we do, but just make sure that your people come during budget session and make your proposal. Got it? Anything?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Does anybody know how many people average stay at the shelter year-round?
Twelve to 15 a night, probably.
Twelve to 15?
Well, they are, they are due to fire codes. And Holland, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's the guy.
I think they're limited in the number of people they can have. If it's okay, Mr. Chairman, we will let this to them and come up to the podium. Holland, you want to go up with him? Holland is on the board and the treasurer, and I think you're the night manager, is that correct?
Jonathan Gaskins.
And, but I think they're limited, in the research I've done, as to how many they can have at any one time.
Twelve nights, twelve a night.
Twelve.
Do you have 12 every night?
Not right now, because the city housing authority helped us out. They had 10 spaces, and they used all of them. So that's a blessing. But on average, we do, we are full.
How many people that stay at that shelter regularly are, were citizens of Beaufort County?
All of them.
For years and years and years? They're all natives?
I've only been, I can only account for two years.
Can only count for two years? Because at one time, at one time, the majority of the people... the people that stayed there were transients. It was a hotel for people passing through.
Majority of the people that basically stand there were people coming out of the prison system, and yes, they had been from all counties. But since I've been here, it's the majority of Beaufort County and Pitt.
And where?
Pitt. We get a lot of people from the Vitam Medical Facility.
From the Vitam Medical Facility?
Yes.
What were they? You mean they were released?
Coming out of behavioral health.
Coming out of behavioral health.
Mm-hmm.
But they were, they lived in Beaufort County, they were just taking treatment in a pit.
Is this, so really, is this a mental health issue that we're dealing with here that should be dealt with differently rather than us just continuing to put money into it?
Alcoholism is considered to be a behavioral, mental health problem along with drug addiction, and that's what we're dealing with. Majority of the people that we have either have alcohol problems or drugs.
Well, you know, I'm sympathetic to people that have been caught up in that, but these are also voluntary conditions that people volunteer for when they get in them. And those that have come out of it tell me you can volunteer to come out of it a little bit more difficultly than you got into it. So it's a voluntary condition. I just have a problem with taking taxpayers' money, as hard as it is for these people to come up and pay their taxes, especially now that the economy has been squeezed and squeezed and squeezed, and using taxpayers' money to feed people who are going to continue to be what they are using the money they have to buy drugs and liquor while we feed them. That's not a good system.
Would you rather have them tearing up the town?
Well, that's what we have the jail for.
And that's what costs the $60 a day to keep?
Well, I'm not one of these socialists that believes in solving these problems with money, so I'm going to have a problem voting for this. It seems to me as though people who are in this condition are charity cases, no question about that.
Not necessarily because I've had police officers, son, from a well family. I've had all types. So it's not just the down and out.
Yeah, well, you're telling me things that are making me harder and harder for me to support this. But if, you know, if this is a charity thing and a Christian thing, as Christians, we should be looking after the poor and the oppressed. My opinion is this is a situation that the churches in Beaufort County should be taking up the money for the shortfall for instead of me using the police powers of the state to go take money away from the citizens to give it to somebody that I decide needs it when they're having to work and feed their children. This is not, this is not a good thing. It is charity. It should be a Christian giving and not a police power-taking, and that's what tax money is. It is a police power-taking, and I can't vote for it.
I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, when you look at the flip side of it where you say, "Police, whatever," these people are there. They're going to be there regardless. So someone has to step forward and look after them.
Can I say this? We're constantly always talking about we are a Christian nation. I mean, and I hate to preach, but the scripture says, "By this all men shall know that you are my disciples." That means by this love. And Jesus himself said, "When you do it unto the least of them, you have done it unto me." So come on and let's open up the bowels of compassion and have some compassion for our fellow man.
The compassion should come from you Christians that claim you're Christians by digging into your pocket and donating this money instead of taking a gun and taking it away from honest working taxpayers. Mr. Chairman.
Can I say one more? Go ahead, Mr..
Mr. Richardson made one statement that I just can't agree with, agree with. And I've done it for 30 years. Alcoholism, drug addiction is a sickness.
Yes, it is.
We don't frown at folks with cancer. So why do we frown at folk? Because they're alcoholics. A sickness is a sickness. Cancer will kill you. Alcoholism and drugs will kill you. And let me tell you, you're wrong. It's not something that people just do because they want to do it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Buzzio.
I have one quick question. I'm going to support this motion, but I have one quick question. What do we do with the female homeless? Do we send?
That's a problem.
I know. Do we send them out of county?
Pick community shelter. That's the only place that...
Okay. That was my question.
Mr. Waters?
Thank you, sir.
I raised a question when it showed up on the agenda, and I asked our manager to try to get some financial information. And I've had a chance to take a look at it. I think, and you correct me if I'm wrong, the money now comes from the United Way, the city, and church donations.
Yes.
People in the community. The thing that really concerned me is when you looked at the age breakdown that you had provided for the city, 13 to 17 years old. There was eight in the last year?
No. I don't know where that came from.
No?
13 to 17?
This was under the Budget Form III that was submitted to the city of Washington. This is where the age group was broken down.
We don't take anybody under 18.
Okay. Well, maybe it's just in the wrong line. How about 18 to 29, 45? Is that?
That's about right.
Okay. Okay. You know, I guess, I don't want these people to be out on the street. But at the same time, I agree with Commissioner Richardson. I mean, I think the responsibility still lies within the community. And the motion was a one-time appropriation with the idea of you coming back during the budget process for next year. And we adopted the policy back in, I think it was April last year, of what we require of nonprofits. And you've met, you've met those, one of them was the tax filing that you've done. And the other one was the financial information. My concern going into it was, you know, was it a money management problem or was it just turning the way the funding was? And, I mean, I've been convinced by reviewing it. I've spent as much time on this $15,000 or $12,000 request as I did on the EMF stuff. I mean, I don't think we can sit here and be anything else other than good stewards of the, of the community. I mean, we're members of the community just like you are. And so I'm going to support.
Thank you.
This one-time appropriation.
Thank you, Commissioner Waters. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Six-one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Manager, you will report?
Buzzio.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong page. Commissioner Buzzio has a resolution that he'd like to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we were lucky enough on Saturday evening to attend in New Bern the 240th birthday anniversary of the Marine Corps. And I must say, it was extremely impressive. I've never been to a ceremony such as that. And what I'd like to propose is a resolution of the county of Beaufort, North Carolina, recognizing the 240th birthday of the United States Marine Corps. Whereas the county of Beaufort, North Carolina is a duly-created political body existing as such under and by virtue of the Constitution, statutes, and laws as stated in North Carolina. And whereas the Marine Corps was founded by the Continental Congress on October 10th, excuse me, on 10 November 1775. And whereas the resolution that created Corps reads as follows, "Reserve that two battalions of Marines be raised consisting of one Colonel, two Lieutenant Colonels, two Majors, and Officers as usual in other regiments. That they consist of an equal number of privates with other battalions. That particular care be taken that no person be appointed to officer or enlisted into such battalions but such as are good seamen or so acquainted with maritime affairs as be able to serve to the advantage by sea when required. That they be enlisted in Commission Four and during the present war with Great Britain and the colonies unless dismissed by the order of Congress. That they be distinguished by the names of the first and second battalions of American Marines and that they be considered as part of the number which Continental Army before Boston is ordered to consist." And whereas the record of the Corps is one which will bear comparison with that of the most famous military organizations of the world's history, Marines have won foremost honors in war and in long years of tranquility at home. Generation after generation of Marines have grown great throughout the world and every corner of the seven seas that our country and its citizens might enjoy peace and security. And whereas this is a special time of the year for the Marine Corps as they celebrate their 240th birthday. Now therefore be resolved that the county of Beaufort, North Carolina hereby recognizes and observes 2015 as the 240th birthday of the United States Marine Corps adopted this ninth day of November 2015. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Seven-zero. Thank you, Mr. Buzzio. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, item seven on your agenda under decision items is an animal control fee adjustment request. This was a request that came through the Humane Society of Beaufort County in support from animal control. It was a request to raise the adoption fee for animals at the shelter by $10. $5 of that would go toward the spay-neuter deposit, and then the other $5 would go toward assisting with the additional cost of the vaccines that are, that have increased. As you know, we partner with them on this program, and every animal that comes out of that shelter is spayed and neutered, which helps us tremendously in keeping the numbers down, and they come out healthy with all the vaccines and things that we give them before they come out. So we would recommend your approval on that. It's a $10 increase effective December 1st.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion? Have a second? Any discussion? If none, raise your right hand if you're all opposed. Seven-zero. Continue.
Item eight is a request for engineering contract approval. In your agenda, I mean, we made an addendum on this and gave you an updated correction. The reason we updated it was because we had not included the First Bank Building. This is a proposal from REI Roof Engineers Incorporated out of Greenville. I have used this company before in other projects in other jurisdictions. What they do is they come in and they will do a roofing assessment of all of our county-owned facilities. They will do a CAD drawing that draws out all those roofs. They will investigate and look at the issues that we have with them. They'll quorum if they need to to find out exactly what they're made of. They'll put together a recommended repair list. They'll help us put together a CIP and a maintenance program for those. Obviously, we've got to protect our roofs, and we need to look after them, and this puts it, puts us in a position to where we can do that and have a plan moving forward, a multi-year plan to address the needs on that instead of being in a reactive mode, which is what we've been in previously. Their proposal to do this for all the county facilities, the roofs of all the county facilities, and to provide the reports and help us put together the CIP and the maintenance and capital outlay timeline is $14,990. Also in this, one of the adjustments we made was because this project is less than $50,000, we've exempted ourselves, the county's exempted itself under the Mini Brooks Act so that we don't have to do a qualifications-based request on this. So we'd recommend your approval.
Now, that $14,990, did they add any for that first out bill?
They did. It was $540 that was added in for that. So you got the latest. We pulled the old one and gave you an updated.
It was the $14,990, that's the new.
That is the latest. Yes, sir.
Much pleasure, the board.
So moved.
Have a motion? A second?
Second.
Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Seven-zero. Continue.
This is item nine. This is the refunding of the installment finance energy savings contract, the series 2011 bonds. As you'll recall, at your last meeting, the October 5th meeting, you approved the financing approach with the Bank of America. You approved the preliminary financing resolution and authorized staff to proceed with completing all the actions necessary to allow for this final resolution to come to you. So that's what this is. This is a final resolution to refund the energy savings contract bond that you have and over the life of that. Again, we're not extending the terms. It's the same term. We're just refinancing or refunding it is what we call it, and it'll save you about $100,000 over the life of that, over the life of that bond. So we would recommend your approval. This is the final piece that you need to do. You've already done the school GO bond, and we were notified the end of last week that the OGC approved both of these, so we're on go.
Pleasure, the board. Some of, have a motion, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Seven-zero. Mr. Alligood, continue.
This is item 10 on your agenda. This is the Beaufort County Schools Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract. As you recall, at the last meeting, this item was tabled at the last meeting for some additional discussion by the board members and some research from them. So we can go back over this if you'd like to. Just tell us what you'd like to do with it. It was, it was put back on the agenda for your consideration. It is a guaranteed energy savings contract for the school system. The contract itself would not exceed $11 million, and they use the savings that are generated off of that contract to pay the debt service on it and pay all the costs associated with it. And there'll be some savings on top of that. Representative from Snyder is here tonight again to answer any questions you may have. But again, the board said pull this and table it until tonight.
Okay. Does the board have any questions of, from Snyder?
Well, I have comments. I don't intend to support it. It's a poor way, it's a poor way to use capital. It's a poor way to manage the assets of the county. If you, if you look at this, there's about $1 million a year in here to play with. Okay? What do you do with the $1 million? I have advocated now for about seven or eight years that the county school system hire an engineer so that they can get into the energy savings themselves so they can take a little bit of money and manage this money. There are probably a half a million dollars a year that we can put in our pocket easily by simply hiring a professional to manage the school system situation and do the same things that Snyder would be doing here. This is a poor way to manage assets. It's a poor way to manage money. And if you look at the return on this, you're going to get over 15 years, you're going to put $93,000 a year in your pocket. Who's going to get the rest of that money? With all deference to my friend Snyder here, they're going to get all of that money, guys, once they, once they spend this. You're going to finance and borrow the money so they can go out and do this, and they're going to get most of this money along with the banks. You can apply a little bit of management to this, which the school board has done a sorry job of, and have a half a million dollars in profit a year to go into your own pocket. I'm not going to vote for this because no business person would ever do this. If you take the $93,000 a year that it looks like you're going to get out of this and divide it by the $11 billion you're going to invest, you've got a less than 1% return on your money. And that is a really dumb thing to do when you look at the risk part of this. Anybody that knows anything about handling money would never do this. You know, Snyder does it. They make good money out of doing it. I don't fault them for this. We have another contract with them, with the county, which is a successful contract. But I'm talking about managing our money. This is a poor and a sorry way to do it. And the second part of this deal is here. The school board wants the county to enter into a new process and guarantee them, that we're going to guarantee them that they'll get the $100,000, $93,000 a year, that we won't take that as a credit against their budget. Well, I can tell you, there's enough sloppiness in any government budget. You will never trace or fine $93,000. There's, there's no reason that we should ever guarantee anybody that we're funding that money. You know, it's just poor business every way that you look at it. I can't support it for the reasons that I've just given.
Thank you. Much pleasure, the board.
Mr. Chairman, I have trouble taking action on a project where I hear that the cost is still moving, that it may be lower. And I just don't think that this is the time for us to, unless we have a firm cost figure, to take action.
I need a motion whether to support or not. I'll make a motion that we do not support the resolution for Snyder. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? If none, everybody in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
No, no.
Seven.
Seven-zero.
Seven-zero. Thank you very much. Mr. Alligood.
Item 11 on your agenda is public comment policy.
Staff was asked to come up with a policy relating to the public.
Me and you were off one number then.
Sir?
Because I got it under item number 10. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. All right. Sorry.
So, as you'll recall, and it's been many years ago, I can't, I don't remember exactly when it was, but the General Assembly put into play that public bodies were required to hold a public comment session. Some, and that had to be at at least one meeting a month. Some agencies have two meetings a month, some only have one, but at least at one of your meetings per month, local governments were required to receive public comment. When that went into play, a lot of agencies put in place some procedures for doing that, some guidelines for doing that. This is actually kind of a compilation of a lot of those different guidelines. It addresses mostly decorum and the procedural piece of how the public comments on things. It sets it up as you've put into play a three-minute period. It does limit it to a maximum of 30 minutes. That can be changed if you want to, but if you look across, some places will do that, some people, some places will put in a larger timeframe, five minutes. They may make it longer, shorter. In general, this is roughly what it is. It does allow people to call in and be put on the list. It just goes through the steps. It says you'll be acknowledged by the chairman, you'll step up the podium, you'll speak. It asks that people, you know, be courteous in their presentations, don't use foul language, those kind of things. Don't attack people individually. Don't campaign if you're seeking office. You know, don't talk about the things that are inappropriate to talk about, which generally are listed, you know, things that are confidential, things that are even as simple as things that are subject to a public hearing that you're having later on. You want to make it clear to people that's not the time to talk about it. It's the time to talk about it when the public hearing is in place. So, these are some of the, like I say, this is a compilation of what was pulled together from a lot of existing public comment procedure guidelines that other agencies use. So, we put that out there for your consideration.
What I'd like to see, because I haven't had the opportunity to really get into nuts and bolts of it, I'd like for us to table this till the December meeting whenever all commissioners have an opportunity to study and ask Brian and Katie any questions that they have, and let's take it up then if that's okay with everybody.
What he just read is not in our book, is it?
Yes.
Yeah, on page 305.
Okay, I missed it.
Yeah.
I missed it entirely.
305, 306.
Okay. If everybody's agreeable with that, we'll just table that until the December meeting. Item number 12.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board. This is a manager's update. Couple of items in here. First is the Communications Committee Initial Recommendations. If you'll look on page 308 of your agenda, you see a list of first recommendations that came out of the Communications Committee. You had the consultant come in and do some initial work. There was a meeting on October the 1st of that group where the consultant made some initial recommendations. The support for those recommendations by that group was unanimous at the time, and in fact, there were several folks that said this is what we've been advocating for for a long time. It is a group of recommendations that are initial based on the first piece of work that he's done. We were, we essentially talked about moving forward with these, but this is a board committee that was put together so we felt like this needed to come back to you first before we move forward on those. Just to kind of go through them briefly, the first one talks about the management of the communication system. Right now, we're fairly fragmented. We've got some folks managing certain pieces of the communication system, other folks managing other pieces of the communication system. This recommendation rolls it all up underneath the Communications Director and says that person is responsible for the communication system and is held accountable for that system. What we sometimes find out when we have multiple people who are responsible for things is we get fingers being pointed back and forth. Not my responsibility, it's his responsibility, or it's not mine, it's theirs. So, this would clear that issue up. Again, the group was unanimous in their agreement that that was something that needed to be done. The second one, Observation B, it talks about our contracts. We have multiple contracts across our communication system that different vendors are managing different pieces of our system again. It's not that we're saying we don't want competition. What we're saying is as those contracts come up, we need to combine those contracts. It essentially will make them more competitive because there'll be more money involved in them, so more people will bid on them. But what we don't, but what we want to be able to do is if you had two radios, two radio systems, and you have two different vendors, when you break it up and you have one here and one here, if you put them together, it's a larger cost, and you've got one vendor who's responsible for it. So, we, you don't get vendors pointing fingers at each other again. We didn't do that, they did it. It's their responsibility, not ours. So, again, it's that consolidation. We believe that this helps in standardization and in management of those contracts, and it's not some, it's something that's going to take us a little bit of time to do because as those contracts come up, what we will look to do is consolidate those contracts into larger contracts where we can, where the dollar numbers will be a little more competitive for people to bid on them. Item C was addressed already in your consent agenda. We had a piece of equipment that came back in that we needed to declare surplus. It was a backup station that had been moved off-site. That's back in and taken care of. Observation D is the fragmented, or there's really not anything in place right now. That's why you put a, that's why you hired a consultant to come in and do this study, is to look at your short-term and your long-term goals of your communication system. So, this is something that obviously they're saying as soon as we put that in place, that's what this group is working on. And then item E kind of goes back into looking at, we currently have some projects that have been put into play or put in the budget. I wouldn't say some, there's one or two, I think, that have been put in the budget to purchase some equipment that's related to the infrastructure. Not, we're not talking about handhelds, but we're talking about infrastructure pieces that support the backbone of the system. And what we don't want to do is jump off on that. Right now, again, we were a little bit fragmented in how we were managing the system. We had different folks with impressions that we needed to do certain things to manage this system in one way. We had some different agreement on other pieces. What we want to do is get it all together before we start buying infrastructure. We want to make sure that we're doing the right thing with the long-term plan. So, this simply says, let's put those on hold unless it's something that's critical, and if it's something that's critical, everybody's already agreed that it's something that ought to be done anyway. So, what we want to do is put those plans in place. So, we'd recommend that based on these, that you allow us to move forward with those. Again, from the group, they believe that it was unanimous in support of that, and they thought this was the right thing to do, but it needed to come back to you as a board because you essentially established that committee.
Brian, who is on that board?
I knew you were going to ask that question. I don't have that list. Vic, can you roll those names off?
Kevin Bonner's on there, Tommy Penley, John Taylor, the Fire Department. Butch Oliver can find out EMS. Commissioner Langley, myself, Chief Rose, Mr. T.
What's on the city?
City, well, that regional group, there was nobody from the city because of the delay of county radio infrastructure. So, the city has their own system. I think that's it.
Okay. Much pleasure, the board.
Well, somebody needs to define the motion. I mean, what are we voting for? What are you asking for?
That you allow us to move forward with this list of recommendations.
That list of recommendations?
Yes, sir.
All right. And you're holding up infrastructure purchases until you figure out what you're really trying to do?
Yes, sir. We want to make sure that when we do make those expenditures that they're in line with the big plan instead of...
You know, I was surprised somewhere I saw that one of our transmitters had been removed from the new tower, and I thought we had bought a new transmitter or something when we did that tower, and I'm saying, how does this happen? What is this about?
Well, what happened was when, as I understand it, there was an issue with that transmitter. There was some concern, there had been a fire in that transmitter. It was the vendor that came in to replace it, took it with them. They were told it was junk to take it with them, so we brought it back into county and surplused it the way it was supposed to be surplused. That was on your surplus item.
There was a fire in the system? It wasn't under warranty?
Now, this was an old, this was an older transmitter, is my understanding. And they had some issues with it, and there was a small fire in the transmitter.
Okay.
So, we have evaluated it to make sure that it could not be, it wasn't something that could be used still in the system, so it was pulled back in.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Six one.
That committee keeps minutes, right?
Oh, they do.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman. One comment. In the last two weeks, I've had a person from the Antigua Fire Department and also the Bellhaven Fire Department comment on the improvements in the communication, being able to get the calls and said it was about like it was in the old days, whatever old days was, but...
Okay. That it?
No, sir. I've got two more items for you. The next item is a request to reconsider the board's action in April to require that agencies receiving funds from the county be a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt status. Included in your agenda is some email correspondence that I had with the Bath Volunteer Fire Department regarding that. You have a list of some information they provided regarding the current status of some of the fire departments in the county. I believe several of those where they are listed as not are in the process of going through that. You'll also see, starting on page 314 in your agenda, where on April the 6th, you had that agenda item, and then on 315, the actual pieces of that agenda item where you talk about the requirements for nonprofits to receive county funding, whether it's firing EMS and threshold levels, and then other private nonprofits. So, the request that came was based on a concern regarding the cost of going through, becoming a 501(c)(3). And those costs can vary. I mean, if you've got to have somebody do some work for you, because I think you've got to have three years' worth of financials, and you've got to fill out the paperwork, and there's a fee associated with that. Mark actually did some stuff for us. I had a conversation with one of the local CPAs, and I said, what does it take? It was Rotary one day. I said, tell me what it takes. And he said, well, you know, I tell my clients, fill out all the paperwork they can, they pay the fee, and I'll review it. And if they get it all right, mostly, I'll fix some of the stuff, and it's probably a couple thousand dollars overall. Mark looked at what the federal government says. You know, if you look at their paperwork burden, and if you had to pay somebody to do all that based on the paperwork burden, you could get to about $10,000. I mean, you know, if you had to go recreate those things and you had to have a CPA do it for you, then you could potentially, you know, it could potentially cost you some fairly significant money. So, you know, there is a balance there between the two. So, the request there is for you to look at it. You know, I did have a conversation with the folks at the school or government who specialize in nonprofits, and the comment they said to me was, well, you know, the reason most people require nonprofit status for someone who's coming and asking money is it adds legitimacy to the organization. And to some extent, I can understand that and agree with it because it means you did your homework, you went through the process, you're working through all this stuff, you satisfying grant providers to you, that you are legitimate, you've been in business, you're doing these things, you've put all that stuff together. That may not necessarily be something you're really worried about with a fire department that's been in existence for 50 years. They're pretty legitimate. There's really not a concern about that. So, that was one of the comments that was made in this request, that there is the piece of it, if you are not a 501(c)(3), if you're not categorized as either a 501(c)(3) or the other areas of the 501(c) piece 2, 3, 4, 5, you're not allowed to take off that deduction as a deduction on your taxes if you contribute money to that organization. So, there could be some concerns there. Typically, those are addressed by the individual agency, you know, whether that's something they're concerned about. So, you have the information. It was a request that you look at it and reconsider it. I don't know if there's anybody here tonight to speak to it, if anybody is... We sent a note out and said we're going to talk about it tonight, so...
Well, look, you know, over the years that I've been here, the county has never really audited these people. There has been some hair-raising stories that have come from some of these organizations about the use of money, and I, for one, am not willing to change this because, and we need to be auditing more of what's going on because we've got a situation right now that I'm very suspicious of in Beaufort County as to where the money's going and all this sort of stuff. And it's taxpayers' money, and the taxpayers need to be protected. We're here to protect the taxpayers' money, and I'm not going to vote to change the policy that we have right now.
Well, and this isn't the entire policy, just to be fair. I think they were asking about the 501(c)(3) status.
I understand.
Not necessarily the financial piece of it, the financial statements and those things. So, just to be fair about that. But we'll take your direction however you'd like for us to do.
Okay. Brian?
Sir?
Did you say, excuse me, Mr. Manager, you said what costs you, some of these, to get the 501(c)(3) status, it would cost as much, could cost as much as $10,000.
Well, you know, Mark put that together just saying that if you looked at the, anytime you get a document from the federal government, they put in a paperwork burden that says, you know, it's going to take you five hours to fill out this form, or it's going to take you 10 hours to fill out this form. So, he took that and said, if you had to pay somebody to do this, yes, you could potentially end up at that amount of money.
And there's very few, there's very few people that the county donate to that ask for more than $10,000. It's very few. So, Mr. Langley used to say that juice is not worth the squeeze. I mean, I wouldn't mind looking at it and put a cap, or if somebody asked for $1,500, I don't think they should be going through all those hoops that somebody asked for $25,000 should be asking for. I would like to look at it and see what can we do to accommodate some of our partners.
Again, you know, I wasn't here when this actually occurred, when I had those conversations, so I wasn't able to address those concerns adequately, I thought, to the agency to ask that question. That's why we said we'd bring it back up because it would take this board, since you took action on it initially, it would take you reconsidering that, and that was what we told them, we would at least put it back out in front of...
Well, we weren't advised at the time we took this action that a 501(c)(3) would incur that much cost either.
Well, the reason that we did this is because you had situations, and I don't know the names, and I wouldn't tell you if I knew, where somebody had a couple hundred thousand dollars in one of these outfits, and somebody took it and put it in their personal savings account. Now, they didn't know where else to put it. They were honest about it. They said, you know, we got the money, it's here, right here. It's in my personal name at a bank. Well, what happens if he dies? What happens, this, that? I mean, think about this. The reason we did this was to protect the county, protect the taxpayers, because we have not thoroughly audited, as we should, these various organizations that we're giving money to. And there are some out there that say what you want to, are not using the money appropriately. This was the first step in tightening the cinch on that so we could protect your money. Now, if you guys want to roll it back, that's fine with me, but I'm not voting for it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
We had this discussion, I think it was back in April or May, when we came up with the requirements. I think one of the things we may need to take a look at is that we said it had to be done by January the 1st, 2016.
Yes.
Because of our budget process, I think we could easily move that until it be effective July 1 of 2016. That gives them a little bit more time to do it. I think it's a very critical issue. Number one, the people that give the money voluntarily, they need it for their protection on that donation or gift. We're talking about people that have $75,000 coming from the county. I mean, we, up to this point, we've allowed the boards of the fire department and the rescue squads, EMS, to recommend to the county commissioners what the budget needs to be each year, and they've made the recommendation on what that tax needs to be. So, you know, you get somebody out there that's getting $90,000 or $110,000 in tax revenue, I mean, I think they need to spend $2,000 or $5,000, whatever it is, to get into correct status with IRS. I'd be willing to make a motion to extend the requirement for those until July the 1st of 2016.
I would second that motion.
Getting their status ready.
In fact, the Commissioner orders has made a motion to extend the deadline to July In fact, Commissioner Waters has made a motion to extend the deadline to July the 1st of 2016.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second. Discussion, I would like to say that, that I think that any, any organization that takes taxpayers' money should, should do the legal work to make sure that if that person, whether he knows or whether he does not know, can deduct that from his income taxes. You take someone that just comes up and say, "Okay, I want to give my fire department $5,000." Well, that man, when he gives that money, he's fully expecting to be able to take that off his income taxes. And as it stands with some groups right now, you cannot do that. And, and so, I can't, I'll support this moving to July the 1st of 2016 and we can find out what's going on by then.
I just want to say this. I concur with Commissioner Booth. There are some nonprofits that, that juice is just really not worth the squeeze. I mean, we have some people that we give $500 to, $1,000 to, $1,500 to. I mean, that's... I understand what we want to do. I say yes when we're really dealing with real monies, but not these small amounts for these, these little charities. I can't see doing that. I really cannot.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from, Commissioner Langley, but how do we treat, we should treat every, as a board commissioner, we should treat everybody the same way? We shouldn't, we shouldn't, okay, you can do this, but no, you got to do this. It's got to be across the board and everybody by the same rules to be fair for Beaufort County. And I think if we wait until July to look at this and have more time to think about it, let's, let's really do think about it and make the right decision.
I don't have a problem with his motion. But what I'm saying is, somebody that you're giving $500 for, that you're going to require them the same thing as you're giving somebody $200,000?
No, if you, if you look at page 315, the policy that we adopted under nonprofits, it's a little bit different. It says 501(c) or a similar status. I mean, it's just like the Zion Shelter. I mean, they file a tax return and they, they do their IRS requirements. I mean, I think we have some flexibility there. It's really not the same as the fire department that's getting $75,000 that has what I call quasi-taxing authority. They make a recommendation to us and we approve that.
Go ahead, Brian.
I do need to ask for a clarification on that because the way we interpreted that, of course, I think, well, I know I wasn't here and in listening to some of those conversations, 501(c)(3) or similar status, what we took that to be was a 501(c)(3), a 501(c)(4), a 501(c)(5). They were still a tax-exempt organization, not necessarily a nonprofit. Because you can be a nonprofit at the state level and not be a tax-exempt organizational level.
That's right.
For me, clarification from this board about what is similar status.
Well, similar 501(c). That's what we really should say.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
As I recall, we never clarified what that meant. So, I was, the question I was going to ask you was, is that when it says or similar status, could that also be interpreted as North Carolina State Nonprofit Corporation?
It would not. The 501(c) status is at the federal level, as you're well aware, not telling anything you don't know. But it deals with charitable contributions, you being able to write it off on your taxes. You can be a state of North Carolina nonprofit and not hold a 501(c) status and you can't write it off. So, I mean, they're not comparable.
As I recall, we were taking into consideration some of the things that Commissioner Langley talked about, is that's why we put similar status in there, was to take into consideration some of these where we give $200 or $300 or $500. That's why, and I don't think we've ever clarified that anyplace else. And/or is...
Right. And from our perspective, from a staff level, we like things to be really, really clear.
And that has to clarify. And that answered, and you're right, maybe by postponing this to July 1st gives some time so that we can clarify some of these statements.
We're really not talking about postponing, we're talking about simply exchanging, exchanging the date that it becomes.
The deadline on it. That's what I said. But it gives us time to consider. Because in their letter here, Bath has a budget of $10,000 for the project.
Right. If it's a, if it's a federal IRS status, then that's the way we took that.
You've got to understand, some of these places don't have that good of books and if they go to a CPA or accountant, he knows that, he's going to charge them more money because he's got to invent three years of books to make this thing work. So, you know, there's a lot more going on here than what it looks like.
Got you.
Okay, I do have a motion and do we have a second on Commissioner Waters's motion?
I seconded it, I thought.
Second, okay.
Could I ask one more clarification?
Sure.
In listening to some of the budget discussions and when you talked about this agenda item, the comment was made, as long as they had filed the paperwork by January 1 of 16. Not necessarily had they received it because, you know, once you put it in that black hole going to the IRS, there's no telling when it comes back.
It could be six months to a year.
Yeah.
Maybe. So, the conversation I remember hearing and listening to those tapes was that you said as long as they had filed all the paperwork and turned it in by January 1 of 16, they were okay. Is, are you saying the same thing?
We're moving that to January 1, I mean, July 1 of 16.
Now, the only thing, the only thing that we would accept on that would be you give us a copy of what you filed that you're waiting on and not, not tell, don't come tell us you filed it. We want a copy of it on that date, otherwise it's over with.
Okay. And there's a way for us to verify that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? 6-0, 7-0.
Still think we need to, Mr. Chairman, go back and maybe take a look at what jury's talking about and see. And I can see where we could have different requirements for people who receive different amounts of money.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
And maybe go back and look at that because if you got a, I still agree with him, if you've got a $3,000 a year business and you got to spend $2,000 on an accountant, I'd just soon not even have the business, you know? Four thousand bucks, spend two thirds of it.
We'll try, Mark and I'll get together and we'll see if we can try to...
You said you have one more item?
Sir?
You have one more item?
Yes, sir, I have one more item. That's the third one there. During your, during your budget deliberations this year, you had conversations and put forward the issue of distribution of tax, tax, received tax dollars for districts back to the departments. Historically, the way that has gone, it's just like you collect general property taxes that come to the county. When they come in, you give them. And my understanding was that's traditionally the way it's been with EMS and with fire departments, that when those funds came in, they were distributed out either that next month or as soon as we were able to compile them and get them back out. My understanding that during budget deliberations, the request came in to take that estimated total levy that you received and divide it by 1/12th or divide it by 12, by 12 to get 1/12th and then you would distribute that starting in July because, you know, July 1, nobody's paying their taxes, so there's no money coming in. People really don't start paying their taxes until December or right up until the very end before it hits delinquent in January. So, you see not much cash flow and that's why the county has a fund balance. We have a fund balance so that we can support ourselves during that time period when there is no money coming in. So, the idea, as I understand it, was you would do 1/12th and be able to put some money so the cash flow would be moving. And then in the last month, in June, you kind of square up. You'd see what you got, how much had been distributed and you'd plus it or minus it and equal out. There's been a request that you reconsider that as well. If you look at that again, some of the, well, actually specifically the Aurora Department has asked that you reconsider that. Their board was, looked at that and felt like it was more beneficial for them to receive the money the way they had traditionally received it, which was when it came in, it went out. I think based on, based on the information I've seen from them, you know, they look at some grant opportunities and they kind of like to see that and come in in a larger lump sum than in a 1/12th distribution. But, you know, they like to speak to that, that'd be appropriate as well.
I've got a question of our chief financial officer. Starting in July of this year, have we been sending 1/12ths?
We have.
We've already been doing that. So, when you get to January, they've already got 50%.
Well, in all fairness, we didn't get it out initially the way we should have gotten it out and we corrected that. But they are up to date now. So, the initial rollout was a little rocky, but we got that straight and, but they are up to date now.
Yeah, they are.
It looks to me like it ought to make bookkeeping a lot easier because you're not trying to sit down and figure out who, how much you got that you can distribute and all that. You're just distributing 1/12th and then you can do your annual bookkeeping. Everything should be easier, shouldn't it, Mark?
It is. The 1/12th is a little bit easier on the staff, get that out. It's not quite the computations that go into, into it. But if it's, if it's important for a particular department, we can make it happen if y'all feel that's a good way to do it.
I think we should do the same thing for everybody. I mean, Duke's mixture stuff is, always causes problems. I think we need one policy and I don't care which one you do. I don't mind doing the 1/12th. I would throw a caveat in there though because you can have some bad years where you don't collect money and whole lots of things happen to you. I think if we did that, the last two months should be subject to adjustments at the county's discretion and that should be in there as a part of the policy. That way, if you have a bad year and nobody's paying their taxes and this can happen, you're not getting enough tax money. At least we can control our budget by, we're short, they can be short.
Well, the, the comment that I've received from two of the people in bar is that, you know, they talk about matching grants and they talk about loan payments. I mean, all of these departments, I'm assuming, have some debt and have some loan payments. I guess I'm looking for some way to make sure that the cash flow is there. I think maybe we've caught some of these people off guard by the change maybe this year. Maybe we need to delay it for everybody one more year so that it gives them a chance to deal with their banker or whoever to try to get it because if they start getting money in July and they normally get it in July, they've collected almost half. So, they're getting, and I think it's, I think once you get used to it, it's going to be better cash flow management for each one of the departments.
But you're already distributing it now, though.
We are, we are.
So, he's already doing it. So, our decision is whether we continue doing it or not.
Well, I guess from our perspective, you know, I get, we could do the math, it would, it would take us some time to do all the math and get it straight. I mean, if you said to us tonight, and I think Mark alluded to that, if you said to us tonight, "No, go back or go back and do it the way you were" or poll each individual department and ask them how they want it done, we can do the math and we can get it, we can do it. There is, it is going to be all over the place.
I make a motion.
I mean, we can do that, but...
I move, I move that we distribute to each and every payable that's tax-based payable, fire departments and EMS, 1/12th of the estimated tax revenue each month with the condition that the county has the right to make whatever adjustments we may so desire during the last two months of the year, which would be June and, or July, June and July payments. Do I need to change that?
Well, could I suggest that if you, to make that motion to go farther back than two months?
You go back three months?
I'd say at least, at least.
The last three months that adjustments can be made in order to bring it into conformity with tax collections.
That would be May and June, wouldn't it, instead of June, July?
Right, May and June. July would be the first.
He said three months, so he...
Practically speaking, I believe they've been making those adjustments in previous years in January, February, as they see tax revenue coming in.
Yeah, but you would do 1/12th every month for nine months and in the last three months, you would, you would make your adjustments to fit whatever the conditions were.
Exactly.
Okay. Would you, would you explain your motion one more time to make sure?
All right. What I'd move, I'll make the motion. I move that we pay 1/12th of the projected revenue to each fire and EMS unit during the first nine months of the year, which we would pay 9/12ths of. During the last three months of the year, at the option of the finance director and the manager, they can make adjustments for revenue because they may not collect as much revenue, things may come in slower or whatever. Those are three discretionary months that the county has in order to bring the books into balance for that year.
Which year are you going to start with? 15, 16?
The one we're in now. Because he's already doing 1/12th for most of them.
I got a motion, I need a second. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a second. I have one myself.
I do too.
I'm just, I guess I'm at a point, I don't really care one way or the other, but I do think it's important that, that however we do it, we do it fairly to everybody. Let's don't, let's don't say, "Okay, you're going to get this plan and you're going to get this plan," because that would be a nightmare for our financial...
Well, within that motion is that we do it for every, I think I said for every one, each one of the individuals, there's no choice in it. You're going to get it this way.
Okay. All right. Mr. Buzier.
Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir.
We're currently paying everybody 1/12th?
Yes, sir.
Has anybody else raised the issue of being paid by 1/12th?
We've had, we've had comments, plus and minus.
Okay.
We have had agencies say we like it. We've had other agencies say we'd rather go back to the way it was.
Well, if you weigh them, how many would there be?
We haven't polled all of them. Those are, those are just...
And haven't we, haven't we, during the budget process, is something we pass a motion or something that says we're going to pay them 1/12th? Because we started it based upon something.
It's my understanding that was, that it came up during budget negotiation.
And at that point in time, when we approved the budget, we approved payments of 1/12th. And also that, Mark, you're making adjustments now and it's necessary, correct?
We're making the 1/12th payments and adjustments, we would typically make adjustments sometime at the beginning of the calendar year as we're in, into the prime season for revenue collections.
Okay. So, what we have is we approved it during the budget process, we're paying 1/12th and sometime in the new calendar year, you're making adjustments as necessary.
We would based on, if estimated revenues were coming in less than...
Mr. Chairman, if we've already done this, why are we doing it again?
Well, I think, I think we're clarifying...
Exactly.
Months 10, 11, and 12.
That's right.
But he's starting to make adjustments in January, in February. Now, we're tying his hands.
That's the only thing I would say about, about adjustments. We might have to make adjustments if we found that estimated revenues were coming, or we might have to suggest to the commissioners that the adjustments be made in the estimated revenue budget, which would affect the expense side. If we, if we saw those estimated revenues are coming in less than they should be and we're going to see that in January, February.
And then he would make them in the last three, they would actually be made during the last three months of the year because it's pretty much over with as far as collections for that year, the last three months and there's very little to be done. Making them sooner could still cause problems. The last three months is, gives him control of the books.
Before we take a vote on this, Chief Bonner, if you, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I'll get a, make a couple of comments.
Chief for what?
Yes, sir. I'm Kevin Bonner, chief of the Aurora Fire Department. And our fire department rescue squad is, they're the two entities that were, were asking for the exception. You know, the biggest thing we don't want to do is cause a hardship on anybody else and, and we know that there are people that do want the 1/12th distribution. It worked better for us, the way we have had our service tax district set up since the early 80s. You know, we've had our operating budget come in, you know, we get our lump sum payment, we've set our budgets accordingly to accommodate for the, the lack of payments until the check comes in. We just saw it as it being easier for us. So, you know, that was the reason why we had asked for the, the exception in it. But by no means do we want to cause any hardships on anybody else, you know? And if it would be easier for the finance officer in the department to keep it the same, you know, and I know you guys want to have uniformity, you know? I don't want to cause any issues with anybody else. You know, if it works better for them, then, you know, we'll, we'll do what we need to do either way. It was just, we were looking at something, you know, that would be for us and our, you know, with the, the service tax district, we've got the tax board that we report to, so on and so forth.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments.
I want an additional comment. During our last audit report, the toughest thing to balance in this county is the EMS and the fire and the water districts. And it's written up and I think this was kind of a stab at trying to be a little bit more proactive and uniform in what we were doing. Otherwise, it's going to continue to be written up in, in the audit report.
Right. Right. All right, I have a motion and a, and a second, and we've had a discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Four, three.
Motion carries. Anything else?
Thanks, sir.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Close session.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Got a motion, a second?
Yeah. It's in our section.